Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the Board of Education meeting here on September 1st. We have item 4.0, Call Back to Order, Pledge of Allegiance. Is Dominique here?
Dominguez.
Dominguez, sorry. Okay, it doesn't look like our student's here. Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dominguez Tyler Tate. Okay.
Okay.
Well, if we have our student of the evening show up, we'll do a quick presentation for him when he comes.
Okay. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Close Session.
Madam President.
Okay, we're going to go back to item 4.0 real quick.
Dominguez. Come on up. So we're fortunate to be joined by a special guest today. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to introduce Dominguez Tyler Tate. He is a junior at Health Professions High School and a member of the Men's Leadership Academy. And he also travels to West Campus and plays varsity football there. This summer Dominguez was hired to work as SAC City Summer of Service Ambassador. And within the ambassador program, he participated in a piloted internship at the restaurant Green Fish Company. After many weeks of hard work, dedication, and trainings, he was offered a position with the restaurant. And we know that we wish you much success with that position. We know that every day Dominguez strives for excellence and works on making healthy choices every day, and you're a great role model to your fellow students. After Dominguez graduates from high school, he plans to go on to college, and we wish you continued success there as well. So congratulations, and you're our stellar student.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to say something? Would you like to say something?
I would just like to say thank you, everybody.
He's going to come right down to you. All right, did 5.0, 6.0 Agenda Adoption. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? Second.
We're going to pull.
All in favor. Are we doing Agenda Adoption? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great, we have an agenda. Thank you. Item 7.0, Special Presentation, 7.1, Presentation of Leadership Award for the United Latinos to Superintendent Jose El Banda.
Come on up.
You're my backup.
Is that scary, huh?
Oh, not at all. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board. My name is Arturo Aleman, and I am the President of United Latinos, a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to full participation of Latinos in the civic arena. With me is Ron Jimenez, who is the Chairman of our Student Development Committee, Hortensia Morales, Lola Acosta, and Alicia Mesa, Dr. Alicia Mesa. She earned it. She deserves it, and she's getting it.
Like it or not.
Yep. Tonight, we're here to give a leadership award to Jose Banda, who is superintendent, for his commitment to the children of the district and his commitment to the community. We also would like to make it clear that this award would not be possible without your leadership as a board and commitment to the entire Sacramento community. I recall two years ago that we worked very closely with you to ensure that we had an appointment of someone who not only had the administrative skills but had the cultural competence that we needed in this very diverse district. And we want to lodge you for making that good decision, and thank you for listening to us, your constituents, and making the right choice. And while we are giving this award to Superintendent Banda, it could not have been possible without your continuing guidance and support of him. When Superintendent Banda, to my knowledge, when he came to Sacramento, he didn't know anyone. He had no preconceived ideas about anybody, and so only your good guidance could have led him to do the kinds of work that he's been doing here. So we thank you very much for listening to us and him listening to you. That's the way democracy should work, and that's the way we should work as a community. In the past, we felt out of step with the board, but more so with the superintendent, and never more so than with the previous administration. God bless them wherever they are. But slowly and surely, you've been turning the ship around, as witnessed by the recent reopening of Washington School. Member Hanson, I think it was in your district, right? It's a beautiful school. It's serving a community that really needs it, and we thank you for turning the whole thing around. Superintendent Banda has been the ambassador of goodwill and good intentions of the board for our kids, and we appreciate that. United Latinos has a Student Development Committee that is dedicated to systemic change by implementing programs within the school district that will enhance the career opportunities of Latinos and students in Sacramento, a unified school district. The committee has been working diligently with Superintendent Banda to matriculate students into Sacramento City College, CSU, and UC Davis. He was instrumental in ensuring that we had representation of students from this school district in the Latino STEM Conference at UC Davis, which brought in over 200 STEM-related students, Latino students, into UC Davis for matriculation. And again, it's the good work that the board's doing, and evidenced by the work that Superintendent Banda's doing. Our interest has also been focused on getting our kids more involved in the democratic process, and we saw how quick Superintendent Banda was to react to our request to place this issue before you, and getting a resolution passed to have high school students registered to vote. We desperately need to have our children engage in the small d democratic process, and we feel that you, as a board, need to continue to show that support and great leadership that you're doing. We really appreciate it. This month and until October 24th, we will be stepping up, along with the rest of the community, our efforts to have our high school seniors register to vote and to follow that up with voting. To vote not only for good local and national leadership, but to vote on California Proposition 51, the Public Schools Facility Bond Act of 2016. With your leadership, the implementation of Superintendent Banda, and the support of administrators, principals, and teachers of the district, we will hopefully improve that what has been a dismal showing of citizens voting in Sacramento. After all, it is the destiny of our children that is at stake. That is why, with great pride that we offer this humble award of leadership to Superintendent Banda, knowing full well that if we could have given each one of you, it would have been our choice. Certainly, you all deserve the good work that you're doing. I would also like to take this opportunity to invite you and the public to the Voter Education Forum on October 8th at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 67 at 2784 Stockton Boulevard, Sacramento, where we have some candidates who aspire to lead us, tell us about the vision for California and for Sacramento. Anyone who is interested can find out more about United Latinos by going to www.unitedlatinos.org. Superintendent Banda, could you come down here so we can take some photographs with you? And I'd like to invite some of the members of the board who'd be interested in coming down and joining us in this appreciation. Okay. Take a picture. Come on.
And we place that way.
Come on, come on, come on. Show people in the front. Don't try and fake I do not.
I'm more than you today.
Yeah, that's good. That's perfect.
Take everybody?
Everybody.
Hopefully, you do.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. You're still over there.
Anywhere you want, I guess.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and use the opportunity from over here. It's kind of a different place.
How's it feel to be on that side?
It's different. I really want to thank United Latinos. Ever since I've arrived in Sacramento, they've reached out, and not only reached out in terms of, let's look at an educational agenda for our children here in Sacramento, but really have taken me under their wing and make sure that I feel welcome to Sacramento, make sure that I had the right supports going forward. And Arturo was one of the first ones that insisted on, you know, we have to make sure we welcome Jose Banda to Sacramento. I enjoy meeting with them. We meet monthly to discuss all the different educational agenda items that they have, which we've moved forward with this board, with our board here. And I look forward to continuing to do that because their focus is, in conversations that we've had and meetings we've had, it's always about kids. It's always about kids. It's not just Latino kids. It's all of our kids here in Sacramento. So I really appreciate the fact that these are folks that could be doing other things, and they do. I know Arturo golfs a lot because he has a lot of time on his hands, but he also makes time. He also makes time to make sure that he continues to be involved with the community and that he continues his civic involvement as well. So I appreciate these folks immensely. Thank you. This is a big honor for me and something that I will display proudly in my office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, thank you, board.
Thank you so much for coming out. All right, Student Board Member Rosas. Oh, I'm so sorry. Hold on one moment. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Pritchett. I just want to start off by thanking the United Latinos. Thank you for honoring our superintendent today with this award. It doesn't come easy, and I'm not sure how many people are familiar with the United Latinos, but they just don't give awards out to everybody. And that has a long vetting process, and you really have to do a lot for the community that they care so near and dear to them and the reason why they formed this group. So I want to thank you very much for honoring this board and our superintendent with that honor. Also, I would be remiss to acknowledge the powerhouse talent that we have here representing the United Latinos. So we have people who were once governor appointees or educational powerhouses in their own right, other governmental officials. So, you know, thank you again for taking the time out of your day to be here. More importantly, I have to say this as well. There's two of us that will be leaving this board, and for close to eight years, we have represented in leadership fashion a face and a stance here in this community, especially our, it's very important for our educational community, that children in our district see leadership that looks like them, that speaks like them, that reaches out to a community that understands what their needs are, where they come from. And all more important, for you to be involved, for everyone to be involved, but, you know, the weight is going to be heavy on our superintendent, since he will be the only standing Latino representative up here on the dais. So I just want to make that known at this point. I hope you stick around for our presentation. Board Member Wu, myself, have a presentation that's about Latinos in the population, both nationally and some locally. And I do want to comfort you with knowing that every single board member has their membership paid to Naleo, the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. So even the new people who will be coming in to take our place, and I want to encourage other board members, now that you will not have two of your board members that represent that community, and we represent in this district, 38% of our population is of Latino descent. So it's very important that you cater to those needs, and that I count on every single one of you here to be a surrogate and an advocate for all of us. Oh, yeah, I forgot. Yes, you're the other face. I just remembered. You're so new. One meeting, new. All right. So thank you very much, and I'll get off my soapbox for that. Thank you again, Superintendent, for addressing our needs.
Member Wu.
I won't repeat the words of my colleague, but I wholeheartedly agree with her. I just wanted to remind, as I do all those who are talking about voter registration, particularly voter registering our young, that I would encourage you, I always reach out to those who are below 18, not voting age yet, because the 16-year-olds are eligible to register, so they'll automatically take into effect when they turn 18. And I think the earlier that we can engage them, the greater the likelihood of their participation. So I thank you for your efforts, and I want to thank you for reaching out to our very young. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those comments from my board colleagues, and I completely agree. I just wanted to say that someone great once told me that I'm an honorary Latina. Just wanted to put that one in there. Thanks so much for coming out. All right. Student Member Rosas.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, September 4th at 6:00 p.m., Monday, September 5th at 9:00 a.m., and webcast at WW SAC Metro Cable TV. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please fill out a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Ross. Prior to the conclusion of the items presented, please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comment until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 8.0, Public Comment.
We have two comments on 8.0 from Delphine Brody, Delphine or Delphine, I apologize, and from Grace Trujillo.
Good evening, board members. Delphine Brody, I'm here as a concerned citizen. It is my understanding that the district is in the final stages of an annual grant application process with the California Endowment to fund the district-wide position of lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, queer, and questioning youth advocate. And this is a position that's supported entirely by that private grant and is eliminated at the end of each school year and renewed in the fall upon TCE's approval of the grant. So apparently, it's been delayed this year, and my concern, and that of many other community members, is that there will be a gap in services to our very vulnerable LGBTQ youth. And I want to remind this board that the safety and the dignity and the very lives of these youth is in the hands of the district's administrators and teachers and staff. And I want to call on this board to ensure that all steps are taken to fill that position as soon as it's funded, but also to have other funding also available besides from the California Endowment to cover this type of situation and to better augment the capacity of the district to support LGBTQ youth in the future. As you know, bullying is at a much higher rate for LGBTQ youth. They have very high rates of suicide, as well as many health problems, and of course, failure and dropouts also result when an adverse climate of bullying and bigotry exists on school campuses. So please, I ask that everyone do their part. Thank you.
Vice President Hanson.
I just want to thank you very much for the comments, Delphine. So the first out school board member elected to the district in 160 years. We've got, you know, I've been really proud of the progress we've made, and I think your points are on tach, and we'll certainly, I know that the whole board and the superintendent would be committed to that as well. We do a lot of great work here, and I think it's really important that you help keep us on track, and we don't forget those kinds of important roles, but just rest assured that, you know, we heard you, and this district is 100% committed to all of our students, including our LGBT students. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Ms. Trujillo.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent John Banda. I was actually going to come here today because I was working with the parent, and she had a concern about her placement in her son's facility at John Still. But I want to thank the fact that it got worked out. I think that's very important, you know, where people work together to resolve the issue. And I think that's the key thing. I think every time people come, it's usually for something that went wrong instead of something, oh, it got resolved before coming to the board. Today was the first day of school, which was really nice. It was a nice experience because my oldest son, Andrew, is going to Washington Harbor, and it was very, very interesting to see, I've been to so many schools, that they have such a system in place. My other son, Matthew, is now going to St. Mary's. And one of the key things that I started thinking, you know, is efficiencies. And I think I'm so glad that Sacramento School District is looking into helping kids, because one of the things I started thinking, I'm like, mm, since knowing numbers, obviously, I know the lady that runs St. Mary's, and she told me that it costs $6,500 to send a child to St. Mary's, the cost. Then I called around, and then I found out that Mary Hill charges $8,000. And I thought to myself, oh, my God, the state pays $10,000 for my son and $13,000 for the children with low income. So I think we're getting close. I guess I'm worried because I know the economy's going to slow down, and the majority of our budget is education. So now it's cheaper to send a child to private schools than it is to public. And I think, especially Latinos, that I know the majority of it would probably give an arm and a leg to go to St. Mary's, which would be a cheaper education than it is to come to private schools. So, you know, I think it's always a blessing in disguise when things happen, and when you start looking at different figures, and at the same time, looking at our future. What's going to happen to our public education if we don't work together and make changes to make things more efficient for all of us? And I think now with the economy, if it does slow down, I think taxpayers are going to say, if I could send private schools are doing it at a cheaper cost than $40 billion in education and saving it to $20 billion, I think there's going to be change. So I think thank you for listening to the parent, because, you know, that's one more parent that's excited about coming to Sacramento School District. So thank you again, and like always, I'm always looking into the future and finding efficiencies and how to make it better. Thank you.
All right. No more comments. Item 9.0. Vice President Hanson.
Yeah, I'd like to poll 9.1A Grants.
Great. I'll take that as a motion.
And move the rest of the consent agenda.
We have to do that separately. Okay, all right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great. All right, we have 9.1A. Approved Grants and Entitlements and Other Income Agreements, Ratification of Other Agreements, Approved Award Change of Notice and Notice of Completion. And we have a public comment.
We have one public comment on 9.1A from Liz Guillen.
No scooter tonight?
Good evening. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. I really appreciate that you pulled the item. Apparently, some of the community members that were concerned got misinformation about what happened, because I understood and was told that the item was pulled for a future agenda, and now they have left. So I will do my best to articulate the concerns that I heard, which were the basis of my request to pull the item off consent agenda. The contract that is at question is the one to pay $2.5 million of general fund to, I believe, eight Sacramento police officers. Community organizations in the Community Priority Coalition have, since the beginning of LCFF, been concerned about wanting to establish a more restorative practice within the district around disciplinary issues. And I believe that the district was responsive in using different sources of funding for some police officers in prior LCAP, and they considered that a victory. However, the addition of more police officers, in their view, requires more public input and conversation. And when it was pointed out to members of the community, many of us felt like, wait a minute, we didn't really understand what this was, what this expenditure was for, especially in the context of the work that was identified in the LCAP, for example, around Spark and the integration that the district was planning of its many programs related to discipline. So that was the reason for wanting to pull it, and I'm afraid I'm not the best representative in terms of advocating why it should not be approved. Mostly, I was using the request process as a way to get more conversation about it. So I thank you again for that. I'm going to recommend to folks who are on the parent advisory committees for the LCAP to raise this issue so that at some point, there can be a presentation for them so that they can understand how the whole program is supposed to be working and how the different strategies the district says it is using. However, the addition of more police officers, in their view, requires more public input and conversation. And when it was pointed out to members of the community, many of us felt like, wait a minute, we didn't really understand what this was, what this expenditure was for, especially in the context of the work that was identified in the LCAP, for example, around Spark and the integration that the district was planning of its many programs related to discipline. So that was the reason for wanting to pull it. And I'm afraid I'm not the best representative in terms of advocating why it should not be approved. Mostly, I was using the request process as a way to get more conversation about it. So I thank you again for that. I'm going to recommend to folks who are on the parent advisory committees for the LCAP to raise this issue so that at some point, there can be a presentation for them so that they can understand what the, how the whole program is supposed to be working and the, how the different strategies the district says it is using for its program as an alternative in addressing discipline is working, including the police officers. I have to say, some language in the contract that concerned me was the authority for them to act in a crisis situation, and I hadn't, I did not see that defined anywhere. And I know that that could be fraught with misinterpretation. And I believe that that is something people should be clear about before any crises occur. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have another public comment.
We do. Thank you. One more public comment on this item from Carl Pinkston.
My name is Carl Pinkston with the Black Parallel School Board. I was also in the understanding as well. But I want to speak to it because it's critically important to the African-American community concerning about school resource officers. It is our understanding in ways this contract is being proposed is that it is expanding the role of what the school resource officer is going to be doing, which is, one, they are going to be engaged in the work related to restorative justice, which they're not trained to do. That's number one. Number two, they will also be able to do what is called crisis management, and that is of a great concern to us as well. We had, when we fought to get funding as it relates to the restorative justice programs and to get the 1.5 million as it relates to the new school discipline policy, our understanding was that over time, funding for school resource officers would decline because the work that, intervention work that social workers, clinical psychologists, and teachers and principals will be doing more restorative justice practice and that you will not need the eight school resource officers you currently have. So we're deeply concerned that going in this direction is the wrong direction of increasing the responsibility and funding for school resource officers, when in fact, we strongly suggest that school resource officers reduce the role that they have, that they are given training, that the district have a MOU with the school resource officer to provide training about the new school discipline policy and restorative practice. And last but not least, we need a community oversight that will, over the school resource officers so that we can get data on the performance of school resource officers. Currently, right now, we don't know whether or not we still need that, because we don't have no basis of evaluation for school resource officers. Teachers are required to have some form of performance. Principals, even the district has to perform for the amount of money that they receive or else there's consequences. We haven't done that for school resource officers. So we strongly suggest you pull this item, reconsider the contract, have a process, a thorough vetting and thinking through of what you would like to see. Take a look at Denver and other communities that are having MOUs, and come back in the future as it relates to the issue of school resource officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more comment on this item from Angie Sutherland.
Hi, I'm Angie Sutherland. I'm a parent. My daughter attends Hollywood Park. And I was on the LCAP committee during the year that we suggested that the funding for the resource officers declined, so exactly what Mr. Pinkston had said. And there really should be a detailed MOU for these resource officers. If you would like a sample, you can look at the Denver School District has an MOU. And I believe our CAC presented this to the school safety office last year when they attended, the school resource officers attended our meeting as a sample of something we would like to see. So instead of expanding resource officers, we should be utilizing those positive approaches that can be handled outside of law enforcement. Because once a child becomes involved with law enforcement, the chances are that they just keep going from there and ending up in jail or prison is a high possibility. So we need to do what we can outside of the law enforcement. Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent Banda.
Thank you. First of all, let me say I really appreciate the comments made by our community parent folks tonight. You know, I think the concerns that you raised, we could easily address. We could get the information for you. I hear a lot of, you know, can we get more detail, more clarity about the role? Overall, I support the agreement that we have with our SROs and law enforcement. Our district is moving towards a more restorative approach to discipline, and that's what the equity work that we've been doing is all about. At the same time, we recognize that way too often, more often than we'd like, serious neighborhood issues can spill over onto our campuses. And we do have that ultimate responsibility to make sure that our students are safe and the schools are safe. The school resource officer or the SRO model is important because it helps keep our kids safe while at the same time connecting. The work that we're doing is all around the culture and the climate of the school and the things that are happening in the community. Our SROs are engaging in training on restorative practices and really embrace the approach. And quite frankly, if they weren't on campus, we would have a major gap. We could still, we would have to resort to calling 911. There'd be a gap in time of who can get there. So any serious issues where there may be violence, weapons on campus, we wouldn't have the response rate that we would have otherwise having an SRO on the campus. With a 911 call, you're going to get someone who's not familiar with the kids, may not be familiar with the parents in the neighborhood, and does not have a relationship with the community. We'd be working with whomever responds to the dispatch call. And if this is our model, I believe that we would be moving in the wrong direction. The path to restorative approach must include, in my opinion, working alongside our law enforcement and the police department to ensure that we are able to support our district vision. And one of those, that one part of that vision is to make sure that we have kids in a safe and positive school environment in which they can learn. I don't view the SROs as the cops on campus, because they do build relationships with students, they do build relationships with parents and with community, and they are there as an added value. When the time calls for serious intervention, they are there to do that as well. And for me, I know as a former high school vice principal and principal, it was very comforting to have law enforcement on campus. We didn't have to use them very often, but when we did have a crisis, they were there and were responsive and supportive. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice President Ryan.
Thank you, Superintendent Banda. I appreciate your comments. And, you know, I just want to say that I don't dispute the idea that we need to have a safe school environment. As a parent of a child in first grade in the district, safety is among the top issues that I find myself grappling with on a daily basis. That being said, recognizing the importance of having a strong partnership with our Sacramento Police Department, but also having a transparent process for accounting for our expenditures, and really wanting to have a greater sense of the integration with the Spark Plan and our overall vision for equity and restorative justice in the district, I think that this merits a deeper conversation. I think Nina Delgato and her team are doing a phenomenal job with very limited resources. I understand that the expenditure as written is actually a $50,000 decrease from last year. That's neither here nor there. I think we need sufficient time to review the contract, to talk about whether or not there could be enhancement language that is explicit to restorative justice and integration with our Spark strategy. And frankly, I think we're all at, we all benefit from a transparent process in which we talk about how this is part of our larger school vision and give our community partners an opportunity to come in and weigh in as well. So I would like to move to hear this on September 15th for vote.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Many moons ago, I was on the Contract Committee here with this district as a new board member. And one of the topics of discussion that we had a lot of discussion about in that committee was about our SROs and our contract with the Sacramento City PD. It was at that time, we did reduce the number of SROs. We did change their behavior on campus and their presence, because we heard from the community, namely, Black Parallel School Board, thank you very much, for bringing that to our attention as a board. And so, and I don't know if anyone in this room will remember, the SROs used to park their car right on top of the campus, and we thought that was pretty offensive. And it only happened at certain schools. So we did change that behavior over the years. And I do want to say that I do believe in restorative practices, and I do see some language in this contract that can be softened up a little. And so what we, you know, what I'm looking at in particular is page 16, where it says the SRO should be present at any school function that has the potential for violence or criminal activity. I think that's kind of provoking the SRO or the police department to kind of profile in essence. So we could soften that language up, choose some other words that could mean the same but feel a little differently, so we're not allowing for a whole force or a whole body of people out there to put any racial or discriminatory intent around anything. So I agree, I would support the motion of my colleague, Vice President Ryan, to bring this back so we could take a look at some of this language, soften it up a little bit. But at the same time, I want to express that not all police officers are bad. You know, we have a whole community of police officers in Sacramento, Sheriff's Department, because we do work with the sheriff as well, Sheriff's Department officers or deputies, that our friends that do belong on our campus, that do help our students, that do serve as role models, and sometimes, these are the individuals that have that diversity factor. So they're either Asian, African-American, or Latino, and they're serving as a role model for our children to see that they can be in law enforcement and they can make a positive force and a face in the community. So I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. So let's just take this back, take a step back, look at it again, and see how can we come to a very good compromise. And I hope everyone can agree to that. So I would agree with moving item 9.1 with the exclusion of the contract for Sacramento City. I'm trying to get the name here, or is it, do I have to pull it out by its actual? SA 1700, what? 142. So I would move to pass item 9.1A with the exclusion of SA 17-00142 to come back at the next September meeting.
So the motion was made by Vice President Ryan. If she accepts the modifications, that would be the motion before the board.
Member Cochran.
I'd like to thank Member Hanson for pulling this in the first place, and I support Member Ryan's analysis of the situation. When you have positive changes, you need to come back and look at supporting contracts and other support systems that help make healthy and safe schools. It's important that we really sunshine this process and that data be collected and it's available for the entire community. And regards to the presence of vehicles on the campus, I have Hyrum Johnson, and I frequently see vehicles parked right in front. They may or may not be responding to a situation, but in conversations with community, that's one of the reasons that people form opinions about certain high schools. And so I don't know that all the problems are solved, that have been deemed solved, and it's always great to look at things with a fresh look. Thank you, Member Ryan.
Member Royal.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Quick question from, for the superintendent. Would this delay of contract and bringing it later create any gaps in security or services to our schools?
So I'm getting affirmative from our chief business officer. He said, yes, there would be.
So in what sense? So basically, we would not have SROs for the time being?
Time an issue, but I let Nina say that.
And basically, what I'm trying to get at is, I do concur with issues that need to be addressed and get into the weeds and work this out better. I just want to make sure that, inasmuch as it's not a perfect system, still, it is providing vital service to the schools, and I really don't want to leave any gaps of security in the meantime.
Thank you, board members. I'm Nina Delgodillo, the Office of State Schools Manager. And unfortunately, there is a possibility that the police department will pull officers during this time. We're running right now without a contract, which I'm not sure with the Police Officers' Association if that's something that's going to be acceptable to the police department. So I can't tell you until I literally call what the response is.
So right now, are they, they're getting paid and they're working without a contract, but they are still showing up to work?
Absolutely.
Okay. So are we expecting for them to continue to show and get paid?
Well, they were expecting this to pass tonight. So not having a contract for another couple of weeks, I'm not sure what their response is going to be.
That, to me, is problematic, not because I don't want to address those issues, but I'm not sure that this is necessarily our wisest decision to leave schools at risk of not having SROs. I would highly, I would like to think that police department would not leave our schools without an SRO, given the fact that we're still working through the contract. But nonetheless, I am making a decision here for the board and for the district, right? And I have no control over what any officer in the Sacramento PD will do or what Sacramento PD will do. But I, from my position, I would like us to consider a little more in detail what this decision is going to cost.
And if I could, if I could just state that I don't think there's any officer that wouldn't want to be there. I don't think it would be, I think it would be a business decision as far as a legality part of their contract. I don't think it's, I don't think anybody, any of the officers would say, I, we've already, you know, been at a football game, we've already done things in advance at school opening. So the decision would not be the officer's, it would definitely be from their legal office.
You could consider, but it's within your discretion, to approve the contract retroactive from July 1, 2016, through September 15 of this year. So you do have coverage. I would not expect the city attorney of the Sacramento or the services to be pulled if you made that determination that you're approving this contract through September 15. And then come back and look at it, or you could approve it through a later date if you wanted to give an opportunity to add some additional language. So that's a possibility, if you wanted to do that.
And in order not to waste time worth smithing, we can either put this on the table, work out some details, bring this item back while we have legal, and we do some work on the side, rather than having to dialogue every single word. So if that's, that's okay, Madam President. So the idea would be to table this item for just a few minutes so that we can come up with the proper language so that we can move forward without leaving gaps in coverage for our schools.
Member Hanson.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing the comments from the community, and but do want to remind everybody that this is something that the district has had for many, many years. So this isn't a new contract that just has come into place. We've had SROs for many, many years. My experience with them is at McClatchy High School, so it's limited to that school. And the SRO there has had a long-time relationship with the students and provides opportunities in their, they have a law enforcement academy that they do with the students that's very well-attended. well-attended for folks who are interested in a career there. So I think there's certainly a lot of value. However, I'm also attuned to us wanting to explore what the contract says, but I'm also leery of us making any kind of modification. And as someone who's been involved in labor for many, many years and believes in collective bargaining, let me just draw everyone's attention to page 12. Item number 21 says modification. So if we want to modify the contract, it does require that both parties sign an agreement to do so. So to me, I would believe the right thing for us to do, we can go ahead and agree to pass this contract tonight, and then we can get a committee together of interested board members, and we can include community members, and come up with some ideas of what we'd like to see in there. But it has to be done in cooperation with the, you know, the city and the Police Department. It's not just a one-way street unless we want to explore partnerships with maybe the sheriffs or starting own police force or, you know, other alternatives. So it's certainly a more long-term project. And because this contract started July 1st, we're already, it's already been two months. So I assume we probably should have taken this up a couple of months ago, it seems to me, but maybe we can work on it in the future and making sure we do this in a timely manner, and maybe roll it into the LCAP as well. It certainly is germane to that, and I think it's, was very wise, and I appreciate the community members that brought it to our attention, because this has been just on the consent calendar for the times that I've been here before. But I'd like us to consider, and we can move forward with the contract tonight, and then understanding that the contract requires that both parties have to be in agreement with whatever changes we make, that we can get a group of us together so that we can mutually, you know, find something that's mutually agreeable. If it's not, then we have obviously a much larger problem on our hands than something that we can solve in a short term of just bringing it back in a couple of weeks. So my recommendation would be moving forward with the contract, getting a group of us together to come up to, you know, if we want to change the roles of what the SROs do, I would imagine that they'd be amenable. The folks that I've worked with, like I said, are very focused on working with the students. It's been a very positive relationship. So I think that might be a good way to satisfy, you know, what we're all trying to accomplish here.
Member Will?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I first want to point out to everybody that the officers are not going to get paid, are not not going to get paid. This contract is between the district and the city of Sacramento on behalf of the Police Department. So they will continue to, the police officers, the SROs who are assigned to our schools will continue to get paid. Having said that, I concur with Member Hanson in that we need to move forward on this contract, but because this contract is a two-year contract, it's not going to expire until June 30, 2018, we can still immediately convene a committee, as suggested, which includes members of the LCAP committee to take into these considerations, and then go back to the city for modification. So we don't lose any coverage, and we can work on amending what we want the officers to do, if that's the desired outcome, while this contract is in place and the officers continue to get this paid by the city because we are paying the city. So that would be, my recommendation is to move forward on the contract and then work, as suggested, on amending it since both parties would have to agree to any amendments to the contract. We can always amend the contract while it's in place. But in the meantime, the financial parts go forward, and we keep in place what we've had in place all these years.
Great. Thank you, Member Will. And I do want to remind the board that this was also in the LCAP and was approved in the budget, that we as a board passed. And so though I, you know, greatly appreciate the comments and fully support restorative justice, you know, being a mom of a recent high school graduate and working with the SROs at my child's district school, and also going to football games where there's many SROs, I could tell you, I know that I respect everyone's opinion, but these guys really work with our kids. And I, three years ago, coming, when I came onto this board, three years ago, we made major cuts to SROs. And even, I could speak from my area, in Rosemont, we had two SROs, one that was at Einstein and one that was at Rosemont. We made a cut, we went down to one SRO that now covers all the schools. That's a hard job for one person. These guys are the first ones on our campus. Think of this, a gun on our campus, it happens. It's just the day of age. We call 911, it takes approximately two to five minutes for a police officer to get to our campus. These guys could literally save our child's lives by being there. So I fully support Member Hanson's recommendation by passing this and creating a task force so we can review the language at a later date. Vice President Ryan, did you want to say something?
I did, I did. You know, I just want to reiterate that this is not a debate over the validity or value that our school resource officers bring to our campuses. I think there is complete consensus on the board that they play a vital role, and that they do work that is largely unlauded and very challenging. I think really, the overarching issue here is, are we articulating in a way that is clear to both the board and the public how this is integrated in our larger vision for equity in Sacramento City Unified and lifting student achievement? What the role of the SRO is, how they are being trained, what the language is around restorative justice, and some exclusion that we see of those core components in the existing provisions of the contract. So what we're saying here is not that we should change how we have operated with our SROs in the past, or not even that we shouldn't have an open and honest and deep dialogue about expanding those services, but that we need to better understand the integration with the Spark program and the Equity Office itself. And frankly, I think that it is fair to say that we want to move forward with the contract, but it's also fair to say that we are going to put in place some clear provisions to ensure that a dialogue that is currently not happening, at least at our level, and Nina, I know that you've been working very hard on this, that we are looking ahead to ensuring that our SROs have the training necessary and also are in partnership with the community partners that are leading much of the ground campaign around our restorative practices and our school discipline policies. So I guess I look to legal to say, is it possible to do an addendum that would then create this advisory group, this task force, since we're not expanding the contract, in fact, reducing the contract by $50,000 from last year's expenditures? Is there the ability to add language to create an addendum that clearly articulates the role of a task force comprised of external stakeholders, including community members, and our LCAP parent advisory committee moving forward?
The answer is yes. You could either do a modification by addendum or modifying the contract itself. Also, even though this is a two-year contract, either party can give a 30-day notice to the other. So in essence, it's a two-year contract with a 30-day out clause by either party. So you could, if you wanted to rescind your motion or have a vote on it, approve this, but either party has a 30-day out on a two-year contract. It's right in the contract. So you can modify it as well, or modify it by addendum.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And Nina, can I ask you, can you share, illuminate for us why we are so far behind the timeline for the existing contract?
No, I can't, unfortunately. I mean, we've had the, we've had the contract for a while. I can't explain why it's taken this long to get on the, you know, on your agenda. But I can speak to the fact that I think that having an amendment would be a wonderful thing. I think there's a lot of things, I came up with a lot of examples in case I was asked tonight, what we're doing towards restorative practices. We do this, I say "we" because it's our team. We do this every day. We had a meeting with the CAC, with Special Needs Group, and at the end of the meeting, they couldn't believe how much we did do for the community that they weren't aware of. So maybe creating a greater awareness of what exactly our team does on a daily basis and how we affect positive enrollment and reduction of suspensions is a conversation that needs to be, you know, included in this language. Because we are doing things every day. We have done it all last year. We're working with the enrollment and the truance, the chronic truance. These are all things that we do on a daily basis. We have been since I've been here.
Thank you, Nina. I appreciate that.
Vice President Ryan, are you amending your motion?
So I think I would be comfortable with passing the contract with an amendment that would create the advisory committee comprised of community members and parent advisory committee members moving forward. I also would like to make the request that we not table this conversation, rather that we bring back Nina and her chief school resource officer to present on the integration of strategies with the Equity Office and Spark at either the September 15th or October 1st board meeting. I think that this has illuminated a real communications deficiency, not just with the board, but also with our community at large.
We'd be glad to do that.
The second, we'd have to concur on the amended motion. And if Board Member Rodriguez does not concur, she made the second, then there would have to be technically a vote on the prior motion. And if she concurs with this motion, then it supersedes the other motion.
Member Rodriguez?
Thank you. I have to say that I think language is really important. And I'm very disappointed that this is just coming to us, and it was due, or well before July 1st, when we're supposed to have heard this, right? I mean, we, technically, we should have had this contract before us in June, so that the effective date would have been July 1st. That's what it says in the contract, right? Effective July 1st. So I'm really disappointed about that part, but that's neither here nor there. And I think that language is important, and I don't know if the Sacs, having had the experience in the past, again, sitting on that contract committee, I'm not sure if they'll have the motivation to come back, sit down at the table, to talk about language and softening it up when there's no monetary attachment to it. I would feel more comfortable with saying a longer, shorter-term period in saying that we'll approve this from effective July 1st of 2016 to like, maybe the last day of October or November or something like that. That way, it gives them the motivation to come back to the table, talk about this language, soften it up, and then bring it back to the board for final approval for the entire two-year term.
I think they'd welcome the language. I don't think that anybody's going to dispute the fact that we, we would like to clarify, anything you'd like clarified.
Member Royal?
Thank you, President Pritchett. Again, I think that we are all in agreement. I think that now we're like, really trying to find the details as to how to move forward, but I think that we all concur that we don't want any gap, that we want to move forward, and that there is a need to reward and to look into the contract. So for the sake of the meeting, moving forward, as I said, I do not want to table the conversation indefinitely, but tonight, just so that we move with the agenda and then work with legal, so that we have the language for the proper motion to be put forward, and then we, you know, move on. But I think that otherwise, we're going to spend another hour wordsmithing specifically the language for the motion. So that's my recommendation right now.
Yes, I agree. Member Will?
Thank you, President. Jerry, can I offer a alternative motion, which if voted on and approved, would supersede the original motion? Rather than vote on the first motion?
Technically, the motion, once it was seconded, is before the board. So unless Board Member Rodriguez withdraws her second, then technically, you have to vote on the first motion. And then, if that passes or doesn't pass, that will determine whether you continue with another motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Rodriguez, do you concur with the amendment?
No.
Okay. So we need to vote on this?
You need to vote on the prior one, which was to pull and not approve
Move the question.
the contract.
Yep. So we got a motion.
SA 1700142.
We have a motion and a second already on the table?
Of the original.
Of the original, of the original. So all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Abstentions? Great. All right. So now we have a second motion.
Now you have a clean slate, so someone can make a motion.
Member Hanson, or Vice President Hanson?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we move this agenda, or move the item with the understanding that we will create a task force to be put together by the president that will be comprised of community members, LCAP members, you know, board members that are interested in participating, and then bring back, and then also a discussion obviously has to happen with the city and the Officers' Association. So I don't see that happening in too quick a time, but I think, you know, given a month would probably be reasonable, but give that to the president to bring back to us. I'd move the item, plus the creation of a task force that the president can appoint to bring.
And that would include all of 9.1A?
Correct.
Thank you. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Abstentions? All right, I have abstain. Okay. So we have one opposed, one abstention.
So it passes by five affirmative votes?
Thank you. All right. Let's move on. 10.0 Communications. Thank you, Nina. 10.1 Employee Organization Reports. CSA, SCTA.
Good evening, and welcome back to the first day of the school year 2016-17. I'm Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. And along with the 2,600 educators that make up SCTA, we look forward to working with you to make Sac City the destination district for California. And I hate to do this considering how far we are behind schedule tonight, but you, when we paused, when you paused to have the discussion that you had earlier, it was really important that you take that time to do that. So sometimes we get behind schedule, right? Well, this is SCTA's only opportunity to share with the board members, all of you, the same information at once without violating the Brown Act. So this is a very important time for us to have discussions with you. And by contract, we have 15 minutes to share that information with you. It is in 18.12 of the contract. And I am not going to use 15 minutes tonight, I assure you, nor any night probably in the future. But I just want us to kind of relax about the three-minute beep. I'm not going to make the three-minute timeline tonight, and I, and I don't need to, okay? So I'm sorry, and I'm sorry it's a night we're behind already, but it's just the way, way it goes, because this is the beginning of our school year. And like many SCTA members, I'm also a parent of two students in the district. And it was an exciting start to the school year, that I got to spend that time with my kids this morning as they began their first day at Sutter Middle School and at Phoebe Hurst. It was also very exciting to be at the New Teacher Orientation on August 22nd with more than 125 new teachers to the district in attendance. I can still feel their energy now, and I thought about them many times today, to think about what their first day is like facing those students. We are also glad that the district has put together draft of the new salary schedules. We posted them on our website today as drafts for those who are interested. I do need to share that at the New Teacher Orientation, Superintendent Bonda discusses emphasis on operational excellence and the need for the district to be more customer service friendly. Unfortunately, the rhetoric does not seem to match the reality. If you are not aware, the enrollment process is a fiasco, and has been a well-known problem for years. Long lines, confusing information, discrepancies between what the website says and what parents are told at the enrollment center, all combined to frustrate parents and create a lasting, bad first impression of the district. This was the front of the enrollment This was the front of the enrollment center when it opened a week before school started on August 25th. I understand there were 100 people out in front. This is what the lines looked like inside on that day as parents struggled to get their kids registered in our schools. How is it that the enrollment center is only open until 3:15 PM three days a week and is completely closed on Fridays? How is it that when the enrollment center gets overwhelmed through no fault of their own? The district responds not by expanding the staff and the hours, but by shortening the I don't know when this sign first started being posted at the enrollment center, but it was definitely there yesterday. That was the last opportunity for parents to register their children so that they would have that first-day experience that my children got today and that many of the board members, your children got today. Parents went to the enrollment center and saw this, and it really says, "Please note, due to high volume, the enrollment center may close to registrants at 1:30." It's almost two hours early due to two to four hours wait time. We apologize for any inconvenience. That is what many of our students are experiencing and our parents are experiencing, their first impression of our district. Is that what the superintendent meant by operational excellence? Is that what you meant when you approved the strategic plan? Is that how you meant for it to be implemented? Something analogous has been happening with Spark. The real tragedy is that in conjunction with the Black Pearlows School Board and the Community Priorities Coalition, SCTA is in strong agreement with the values described as part of Spark. And our teachers hunger for the training to help them meet the needs of their diverse students and welcome the opportunity to address their students' social, emotional well-being and support productive conflict resolution skills that were banished during the era of toxic testing and teach-to-the-test mentality our school district, our school site environments were subjected to. And we strongly believe that sites and communities need support to do that. But the implementation from the Equity Office has been illegal, irresponsible, and misguided. Somehow the buzzwords "theory of action" and "urgency" become an excuse to impose an unlawful top-down initiative that rejects the inputs of teachers, parents, and the community, and even the direction offered by this very board. That's why we've been forced to file an unfair labor practice charge, but only after repeated understandings that were reached about training and implementation with Doug Husher and the Equity Office were reached only to find them not upheld by the Equity Office. Just to tell you a little bit about what it's like to meet with Doug Husher, Lisa Allen was there and also Cindy Nguyen from HR. We met in June to hear how all these plans were made by the Equity Office and that money was spent and that it was impossible to reverse things and that they had trainings planned for the next week for teachers that the district had handpicked and that we significantly disagreed with. Anyway, we met in June to talk about this, and we found kind of a compromise, although we disagreed with many, many things. We agreed, okay, fine, have the two, two-day trainings in June that were scheduled the following week. We won't fight about that right now, but we need to come back and have many discussions about it. But just open up the trainings in August for all teachers so that we can create the kind of groundswell that teachers need, that our sites need, that our communities need for everyone to have information and understanding so that we can build a true restorative practices community. And Doug Husher agreed to that. Then we meet in July. Basically, we have to do the whole June meeting over again, just a repeat of it. In fact, I witnessed Lisa Allen have to remind your Superintendent of Equity that he had agreed to have those August trainings open to all teachers. And still, August rolls around, there's no advertising of those trainings being available to all teachers, that anyone could sign up for them with a limit of what we could afford as a district. None of that occurred. Last week, we tried again to meet with Doug Husher and Lisa Allen and Cindy Nguyen. And basically, the moment your deputy superintendent left, Doug backtracks again, leading to the unfair labor practice charge. Unfortunately, the top-down approach favored by Mr. Husher and Superintendent Bonda threatened not only the effectiveness of Spark and that program, but because the parcel tax relates to creating a restorative practices culture, many are questioning the support of the parcel tax if it means channeling even more money into the Equity Office's fund managed by Doug Husher and Superintendent Bonda. Our district deserves better. We can't become a destination district or a district that exhibits operational competency, let alone operational excellence, if the district's leadership is more interested in ticking boxes on a rhetorical scorecard than improving the functionality of our district. Finally, two weeks ago, the staff prepared a scathing report on the deficiencies of the Rosemont Charter school application before you tonight. And yet we are somehow to believe that the disqualifying deficiencies have miraculously been corrected in the last 14 days. The proliferation of charter schools threatens the financial viability of the district, therefore threatening the quality of education for all Sac City students. And finally, we urge you to reject the charter tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teamsters. UPE. 10.2 District Parent Advisory Committees, Community Advisory Committee.
I'm Angie Sutherland, and I'm the Chair of the Community Advisory Committee. Each of you should have a packet. We wanted to follow up with, from the last board meeting, Member Ryan had asked some questions about the special education audit. And so we made some asks, or we have some asks, and that the CAC has submitted that we would like for the audit to be conducted by an independent, highly qualified professional firm or individual who has experience in special education and the evaluation for that, as well as providing technical assistance to local state education agencies. We also wanted the selection of the auditor to be a transparent process, including members of the CAC to help be a part of that, given our role as the advisory to the school district. We also request that the scope be comprehensive and data-driven and be an analysis of the quality and effectiveness of special education services provided to students with disabilities and any recommended action plans, improving student outcomes, that they be based on replicable, evidence-based services and programs. We also hope that some of the concerns that the CAC has addressed to the school board be included as part of the scope of that audit. I know that you're aware of the increase in the number of special day classes and the kind of halting of the inclusive practices classes, as well as the current teacher's contract that violates federal disability laws. We hope that the district will welcome the CAC's participation in that, and we thank the district because we do have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, September 6th, at 6:00 PM here at Serna Center, and we'll be meeting with the district administration to discuss the special education audit. We also have formed a CAC Special Education Outcome Subcommittee, and we've organized our work into three buckets. The first bucket is a comprehensive review of who the students are in special education and detailed aspects of that, and the services and accommodations that they're receiving and whether or not those are effective and in the least restrictive environment. Also, we want to know how is the district building the leadership capacity for significant improvement in student outcomes in special education? We also hope that these areas be included as part of the scope of the audit. Secondly, I'd like to bring your attention, we've given you copies of our brochure for this year. We did have it translated into Spanish. It's the pink copy, and then the white copy is the English version. Those are available on our Facebook page and our website. Lastly, at the next board meeting, we'll be talking more in depth about our school climate workshop that's coming up in October. And it's going to be centered around school climate and issues of bullying, discipline, and social communication. And we will also be requesting a resolution for our district on Disability History Week in October. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gifted and Talented Education Committee, oh, I meant District English Learner Advisory Committee. Gifted and Talented Education Advisory Committee. Indian Education Parent Committee. Yes, oh, sorry, Member Cochran. Absolutely, please do so.
I'm sorry I didn't notify you ahead, and I'll be very brief. So D-LAC is already working hard. Parent representatives are going to be meeting very soon, I believe next Friday, with district staff, and one of their main targets is to really polish off some bylaws so they can get off to a very positive start of making things happen this year with English language learners. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 10.3 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Today was a very exciting day in that it was the start of the new school year for us. And to that end, we started out by launching this new school year by recognizing two Teachers of the Year. One of those is Daniel Crenshaw, who's a math teacher over at Rosemont. And the second teacher that we were able to acknowledge and recognize on the first day of school was Carrie Relis, who's a teacher, kindergarten teacher at Phoebe Hurst. The first event at Rosemont, we were able to totally surprise the teacher. We were able to bring in a basket with a lot of different goodies that we received from community, you know, businesses and other folks in the city that were able to come up with things. So there were things in there like tickets to the Sacramento Kings, to the River Cats, to the Republic. There were in there coupons for dinner, to go get dinners, theater tickets, concert tickets. There was quite a number of things. And all that was really just a small token to say that we really appreciate all the efforts of these two individuals particularly, but really they're representative of a lot of the teachers, of most of the teachers that we have throughout the school district that are committed to working with our students and being able to help in their education. It's also an opportunity for us to launch our math campaign, which is titled "With Math I Can." This is a campaign or a partnership that we have started with Amazon Education, and the whole focus of it is to really promote growth mindset. What that means is we want every student to be able to learn math and/or believe in themselves that they can learn math at the highest levels through practice and persistence. We know that great teachers are at the heart of this work, and we know that they're going to step up to the challenge of highlighting math as an essential skill set, not only for their success in Sacramento City Unified, but also for them to be able to succeed in college and beyond. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about the summer Spark trainings that went on and the growing enthusiasm for the work of the Equity Team. This summer, Spark, which stands for Social Emotional Learning, Positive Relationships, Analysis of Data, Restorative Practices, and Kindness, we had over 500 people that were trained during, over a span of 11 days this summer. Participants included teachers, office clerks, social workers, parents, principals, vice principals, board members, and interns. The response was overwhelmingly positive. More than 90% of the participants rated their training as either excellent or good. We were able to post these so that folks could see what the initial response was for the training. We know that none of these concepts are new. What's new is that we have a cohesive process and the resources in place to enact the Equity work. We're looking forward to using the Spark collaborative structures to address discipline disproportionality, to lead courageous conversations about race, enhance relationships, and develop social, emotional learning competencies. Spark will be able to provide a vehicle to introduce our schools and their communities to restorative practices. In fact, in one of the visits today, first day of school, they were doing a circle in which they were starting to already put in place the restorative practice. That's one of the models that they use. We're optimistic that Spark will help create school communities where all students feel a sense of belonging. And finally, I want to give a big thank you to the staff at the Enrollment Center. I was over there about a week and a half ago and saw how hard that staff is working to process parents. What happens is this time of year, usually about the last three weeks of summer, we get a tremendous rush on the Enrollment Center for parents that either are just moving into the community or that just realize that school is starting, they need to enroll their students. I can't say enough about the folks that work over there. They're under tremendous pressure to process people as fast as they can, but in comparison to where we were before, these people treat everyone with dignity, respect, patience, and are able to process the parents. Earlier tonight, we heard them comment made about closing the office early, and it makes it sound like they take the time off. The staff is having, out of necessity, having to shut the front office early because it's going to take that much time to process everybody that's inside and be able to be done by 5, 6 o'clock in the afternoon. I also have to highlight the fact that to process the last wave before the first day of school, the staff was there till 1:00 in the morning. I know they've worked long hours, they've worked on weekends, they have survived on pizza and other things that people bring in so they can continue working. And we know that we have a long ways to go. Our commitment to excellence is that we will continue to review what we do, and we know that we can always do better. And so when the whole process is finally done, we are going to meet with the staff from the Enrollment Center and leadership, and also our staff, to be able to evaluate where the gaps are, what do we need to do. It may not be just a matter of adding more people, it may be a matter of, you know, reviewing our practices and our processes. But again, a big thank you to them. I know they're under tremendous pressure. I know that there's a big group of parents that need that immediate attention, but they are working hard and long hours to make sure that we can do that. It's not for lack of effort on the part of the Enrollment Center staff. Next year, we'll be looking at adding additional staff. We're going to be rolling out kiosks for those parents who are able to do the online enrollment, which should be able to make a difference in terms of processing folks in a more timely basis. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 10.4, President Report. As Superintendent Bonda mentioned, this morning, we had an event at Rosemont High School, and Mr. Daniel Crenshaw, the fabulous math teacher there, was honored. It was a great event, and I think the best part of the day was seeing how surprised and caught off guard he was, along with his students that didn't know what to think of what was going on. And another highlight was to see Slamsen do a face plant. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the Facilities Department, and I know they are understaffed at the moment, and I had contacted them about some work that needed to be done at Sequoia Elementary to make it presentable prior to school starting and give that school some pride. And I took a drive by there last week and saw that it was completely cleaned up, so I just wanted to personally thank them for that and Superintendent Bonda for reaching out to them as well. I did want to just mention one thing. I know Superintendent Bonda, you had mentioned in regards to what SCTA brought to us regarding the Enrollment Center. I completely agree. I think that the enrollment office is probably overworked at this point, but I think that this board probably should be looking at the processes of enrollment. I know that in my community, I know I shared with you today, that I had a constituent that came to me that was trying to do an out-of-district transfer into our district to be at Rosemont High School and was told that she would not be approved, or her son would not be approved until September 12th. Now, at that point, we're going to lose kids, so I'd like to be able to look at these processes, and I know that you said that you would be looking into it as well, but I think that the board overall, maybe we should have a presentation on it and look at the processes and see how we could help with the enrollment process. Maybe it needs to be going back to school sites, maybe... Maybe it needs to be going back to school sites, maybe it needs to be half and half. I don't know what the answer to that is at this moment, but I think that's something that we need to do. So I'd like to make that a formal request. And that is all I have. Item 10.5, Student Member Report.
Thank you. Today, I have to share an update on Student Advisory Council's progress since the last board meeting. We have scheduled so far the meeting dates for our regular weekly executive council meetings. They will be held on Thursdays during this month. After September, they will be held on Wednesdays. Our youth council meetings will continue being held on every third Thursday of the month. Along with scheduling our 2016 to 2017 meetings, we have also begun backwards planning this year to lay out the goals that we will have this school year regarding not only the initiatives, but adding more students to SAC. We will continue to continue the work that the older executive board did and finalize initiatives from last year, those being food waste and dress code. We are in the process of developing a third initiative. Members are adjusting well to their new positions and are currently preparing for the next youth council meeting, which will be on September 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.6, Information Sharing by Board Members. Member Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, President Pritchett. I think Anne, while she's trying to get our presentation up, I just kind of want to talk about Measure G a little bit for, and the meaning it is, how meaningful it is for our district. It actually is more than restorative justice practices. It is, provides for extra funds so that we can do more professional development for our teachers, and it also provides for funds so that we can bring back things like the arts to our schools, which are not reaching all of our schools at this time because of budget cuts and, you know, the bad economy and the downside in our economy. So I would really hope that, you know, we're moving forward in support, and I thank United Latinos for being here, we really need your support on getting the word out to approve and pass Measure G, because it means so much to our children. It's going to bring so many more services than restorative justice practices to our school district. It's going to bring back those services that our children, who are often left out of the conversations, you know, they're going to bring back those services to those that are much needed. So, thank you for indulging me on that. This is a joint presentation by myself and Member Wu, who we went to the annual conference for Naleo. And Naleo, again, is the National Association of Latino Appointed and Elected Officials. So, next slide, please, because I don't have the control of the slides. Thank you. So, here we are on the plane on our way to Washington DC. Seen me there with no makeup, which I currently, I often, I think I did it before Alicia Keys, though.
I didn't have any makeup.
Yeah, well, you didn't either, yeah. I think that was our 5 o'clock in the morning flight, right? Yeah, we had 5 o'clock in the morning to be there on time. So, next slide. And 5 o'clock in the morning one day to the next day, and of course, you know, there's a three-hour lag, we got to fill the burn at 8:30 in the morning, which was 5:30 again the morning on our time. So, there he is. We got to see Bernie talk about, you know, his reasons why he and his platform, why he wanted to run for president, but unfortunately, at that time, he had already stepped out of the race and endorsed, not endorsed yet, but he was on his way to endorsing Hillary Clinton. So, next. The sessions we attended, of course, was the presidential candidate Bernie Sanders. We attended a plenary session. We run, we vote, we decide Latinos in Elections 2016. From local offices to the White House cultivating leadership, climate change, a look at the impact on Latinos. You are not alone addressing Latino college student debt, keeping America healthy, state approaches to cost containment, which was one that I really liked. A conversation on guns in America, which is the one that Daryl really liked, and making a difference Latinos on the world stage, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Next slide. Our notable speakers, these are just some of them. We had a full, like, day's worth of speakers, but these are just some of the ones that were notable. United States Secretary of Education, Honorable John B. King. Our Assistant to the President and Director of Domestic Policy Council is Honorable Cecilia Munoz. Our favorite Secretary of State, Alex Padilla. And we also have a local hometown guy, is California Congress Member Javier Becerra, and another Congress Member, Tony Gardenaas. We had these few people here from the world stage. We had the Ambassador of Mexico, Carlos Sada, the Minister of the Embassy of Israel, and the Chief Deputy of Mission, Honorable Ravine Azar, and Ambassador of Canada, Honorable David McNaughton. Next.
McNaughton.
McNaughton, thank you. And so, Daryl and I are going to share these little points here. So, we thought it would be good to bring forward some of their, some of their most notable quotes that they said during their speeches. This one is from the Secretary of Education, John King. "We need our local office holder's support to support active and meaningful parent engagement to ensure access and equality in education." He says, "I need your voice to help every responsible, help support responsible advocacy for justice and equity for every student."
From Congressman Javier Becerra on gun violence, "We should never let another new town, Columbine, or Orlando happen. It's about all of us. Let's make history happen and get gun control legislation passed."
Next slide, please. Minister and Chief Deputy Honorable Ravine Azar, "The Latino culture in the United States is the bridge to the entire hemisphere. There is approximately 50% of the residents in Israel who are of Hispanic descent and who speak Spanish."
Ambassador of Canada, Honorable David McNaughton said, "We're going through a difficult time in the world right now. Both of our countries were founded by people who came here for a better life for their children. We have a great diversity of people because of this. At a difficult time, we face challenges and fears. We need to look towards our friends for support and find things we have in common for a stronger future."
I'd like to point out a couple of key statements from our Secretary of State, Alex Padilla. "It is important to inform and train all Naleo members of key policies like education, climate control, and safety." And this is very exciting, and he was very excited, and I can't say it with the amount of excitement he had, but California is poised to adopt automatic voter registration at the time a person obtains their driver's license. This will create a cost savings and an increase in the entire voter base. The money saved will go toward outreach efforts like early voting. And speaking of voting, "We run, we vote, and we decide, all of us." There's a really cool text message feature, I don't know if anyone has heard about it, but all you have to do is take out your cellphone and text "VOTE" if you're English-speaking to 2133. So, have you all done it yet? Okay, take out your cellphones right now and do it. So, you in the audience, too. So, take out your phones and text to 2133 for English, "VOTE." If you want your messages to come to you in Spanish, text "VOTA." There you have it. So, one of the things that I really liked in this training was the early college high schools. This is the way that is being found right now to combat student debt. And what it does is it dual-enrolls students in both high school and community college. So, at the same time, they're going concurrently. It's been proven in El Paso, Texas primarily, that it reduces the amount of college debt and increases both the high school and college graduation rates. And students are, actually, they obtain their associate's degree probably about a week before they say they graduate from high school. They have a guaranteed transfer to the University of Texas El Paso, and they're coming in as juniors, which means they are skipping two years of that four-year time. And it has been proven to graduate more high school students, create less remediation, and help students persist to completion of their four-year degree with little to no college debt. Next is Daryl.
So, I participated in the session on gun violence in addition to the sessions with Member Rodriguez, and I wanted to share with you some of the findings that were collected and created from the Violence Policy Center releasing their third annual report in June of 2016, and the results, to me, are pretty frightening. More than 50,000 Hispanics have been killed by guns between 1999 and 2014. 33,532 of those were gun homicides. In 2014 alone, more than 3,000 Hispanics were killed by guns in this national, with 1,732 Hispanics died in gun homicides, when 1,114 gun suicides. Homicide is the second-leading cause of death for Hispanics between ages 15 and 24. The homicide victimization rate for Hispanics in the United States is nearly twice as high as the homicide victimization rate for whites. Most Hispanic murder victims are killed by guns. Hispanic victims are more likely to be killed by a stranger than the national average. A large percentage of Hispanic homicide victims are young, 38% in 2013 were age 24 or younger. So, as a result of, and as a result of limitations in the current data collection, the total number of Hispanic victims is almost certainly higher than the reported numbers suggest. And so, there were a host of recommendations, but all of them were linked to the proper collection of data so proper policy can be created and understood with respect to gun violence, particularly in the Hispanic community. So, one of the things that I carried away from this discussion was that high-capacity weapons, with respect to high-capacity weapons, it's too easy to kill too many people too quickly, and so something has to be done about gun safety.
Next, we want to share with you a few moments that we had, meeting certain people. So, here we see the Honorable Congress Member Javier Becerra. Next slide. This slide was very special, this picture. It's the Secretary of Labor, Honorable Julian Castro, and he just had received the award. It's a very prestigious award from the Mexican government called the Otlí. And you get that award for doing a great amount of work for a great number of people here in the United States, so, or outside of Mexico. So, he was honored with that award, which is amazing. Next slide. We also were offered a night tour by Naleo and some of their sponsors, and so here we have Daryl taking a video or a picture of our tour guide of the monuments. Next slide. And there's one of the monuments, so I'm taking a picture of the person taking the picture here. This is Dr. Martin Luther King monument.
Love the selfie stick, Daryl.
What's that?
I'd love the selfie stick.
Next slide. This here was very meaningful, and I thought it belonged in here, and I would like Member Wu to read this and tell us why it's so meaningful to you.
So, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We're caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." This was said by Dr. King in Alabama in 1963. What it means to me is we are all inextricably linked. We are all one, so that one tragedy happens in one place, and we all say we are with them, we are truly with them, because that is what, how, our world has gotten smaller, our communications is faster, and we can't help but be affected by other tragedies throughout the world. And so, we have to work together to make this a better place, and that's what that means to me. It was very meaningful, and that's why I wanted to point it out.
Yeah. He made me take like 10 pictures of him to get the right lighting and the right picture. He wanted to make sure all the words got in there, but we were, as you can see, we worked very well as a team, and the next slide will show you why. He's very presidential. So, there at the gala that, where Honorable Castro was honored, there had these pictures, pretty big photos of many presidents. There was my favorite FDR, there was Bill Clinton, which I think Daryl Wu has a picture of him posing like Daryl Clinton. That's what I think we were calling him, Daryl Clinton, for a while there.
It's the hair.
It was the hair, real sleek there. So, yeah, this was a very special occasion, and as you can tell, Naleo really kind of goes all out to make sure that, you know, we were all-inclusive and that everything that had a theme that was threaded back into each other. No one person is, you know, above the other when it comes to being in elected office. We all represent one thing, and that's the entire population wherever we sit and wherever we serve. So, that's why Naleo is such a special organization. Next slide. I would like Member Wu to read the first one, and then I'll read the second.
So, thank you to the Board of Education for continuing to support a membership for each board member, and that is each board member, each of us to Naleo.
And also, I just want to reiterate that the attendance at these types of educational training opportunities helps our board to expand in knowledge, leadership, and meeting others throughout the United States who are in positions like ours. So, again, thank you to the board for allowing us the time to go, and I know it seems like it's an expense that we're not sure what happens at these events, and that's why we bring back these presentations, so you know that we do gain something from it and we do bring back the information. And speaking about bringing back information, I have stuff here for the board. Some of the things that were highlighted in the slides are contained here. Some other things that are not highlighted in the slides are also contained in this packet of information that I have, so I'll put it in the back here. If you're interested, just go ahead and pick it up. But again, thank you very much for your time. I hope that it was worth your time to stay here and listen to this, and if you, United Latinos, have any questions of me about this, I welcome myself to you. And then, at the next board meeting, I'll find time to talk about some of the exciting things that we're having in Area 5 going on that actually support, and in one case, actually supports a good portion of our Latino community at one of our schools with a program that is proven to increase literacy rates for our children. Thank you.
Member Cochran.
Thank you so much. Well, a lot happens in the summertime, and I'm very happy to springboard off of some of the comments that were made about gun control and let the audience here and in television know that this board actually has taken action regarding the serious and deadly situation that we have in this country with the preponderance of arms and weapons. On July 8th, we were able to pass a Resolution 2897, and it was developed out of concern for the growing epidemic of gun violence, and it was a determination to make change where it is possible. We're not a body that can make sweeping legislative change, but it is our responsibility to protect students, and so we crafted this resolution. And while it's not going to change the world, if every school board would draft such a resolution, if every city would take up responsibility and step forward about sensible gun control, then we would have a safer nation. It's really time to stop the, actually, the murder of young children, boys, girls, men, women, members of our society because of our lack of taking responsibility about guns. So, I have the resolution, I'm going to read it. "The Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, Resolution Number 2897. We're encouraging California State Legislature Governor Brown, Senators Feinstein, Boxer, and Representative Matt Suge to support measures to deter and reduce gun violence. Whereas, it is with growing grief and concern that the Sacramento City Unified School Board sends condolences once again to victims of gun violence. And whereas, recent events underscore the national gun violence leaves no American untouched, whether you're a kindergartner in Connecticut or a club patron in Orlando. And whereas, we acknowledge the individual's right to keep and bear arms. And whereas, we recognize the need to eliminate easy access to firearms and ban the possession of semi-automatic firearms. And whereas, Sacramento City Unified is a school district entrusted with the responsibility And whereas, Sacramento City Unified is a school district entrusted with the responsibility with more than 40,000 students. And whereas, we believe that it is correct to call for this action under the purview of student health and safety. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education will steadfastly enforce all our existing policy and administrative directives about gun safety. Continue to have zero tolerance for guns in or around our school property. Provide and promote student mental health services. And support laws to ban the possession of all semi-automatic firearms. Extend background checks to include no-fly lists and terrorist watch lists. Allow juvenile records to be accessed in gun background checks. Require gun owners to obtain a safety license and create a firearms registration system. And create a cash-for-guns program for the surrender of all types of semi-automatic weapons. We are not a body that can push forward legislation. We're not the legislature, we're not Congress, but this is the type of action that needs to come from smaller bodies that have responsibility for children. And I'm very proud of the board for supporting this. On a happier note, it was the first day of school, and I was happy to visit schools, particularly the high school that is in my area, Hiram Johnson, which is in a cloud of joy for many reasons. They have a wonderful new principal, they have a staff that is pulling together, they've developed a positive tone on the school district and on the actual campus. But they also have some things happening physically to the campus. New tennis courts are going to be resurfaced, and hopefully the pool will be repaired soon. But one of the most exciting things that's happened at Hiram Johnson in many, many years is they've hired a person to bring back the band and music program at Hiram Johnson High School.
Hey.
I'm ecstatic, and I can't wait. And I hope that the drum corps gets developed first, and it drives the teachers crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Wu, you have more to say?
I just have one. You know, me, I'm usually a person of very few words, but I just wanted to congratulate our Teachers of the Year, and it was a pleasure to go to both Rosemont as well as VIVHurst today. But I wanted to point out this fact for the record, that me, lawyer in the room, was able to answer Slamsen's question.
You were.
Does anybody know the Pythagorean theorem?
I was impressed.
Huh?
Slamsen was impressed, too.
No fair, you were an engineering student.
I just wanted to share.
Okay, that was worth it.
Vice President Ryan.
Thank you. In the interest of time, since we're running so far behind schedule and have so much more on the agenda, I will hold my update, other than to welcome everyone back to school. And I did want to just share my genuine heartfelt gratitude to the board for adjourning in my mother's honor at the last board meeting, and to the community for the incredible outpouring of support that they have shown my mom. I actually have a couple of community members in the audience that brought meals to my home. I got endless cards and calls, and such an incredible group of individuals, including my colleagues and community members, who came out to celebrate my mother's life. My mother was an incredible champion for education and believed that my public education was my path out of poverty. And so I am so grateful that individuals took time out of their busy schedules to honor her contributions to the world.
Vice President Hanson.
Thank you very much. Lot of exciting things. In particular, just want to note the opening of Washington Elementary School. We are definitely making our district a destination district, so I'm glad to have folks joining us in that mission. It's very important. Very exciting news today. We actually had a news crew out there. I think that's going to be a great rejuvenation for helping Midtown and Downtown Sacramento continue to grow. And I really appreciate the partnership of everyone, board members included, who helped make that happen. A big welcome to all the new teachers. We're excited that we had 186 new teachers join the district this year. The district staff and the recruiting that happened here was extraordinary. That's the kind of stuff that is going to really pay benefits many, many years into the future. And I hope that they'll find that they've got a really happy home here at Sacramento Unified District, that we really value them, and that it's going to be a partnership that we want to have, a lifetime relationship with the new teachers that have joined us. So I'd like to welcome all them. I did want to note a little bit, just take a moment to talk about the ability, you know, I'm very saddened that SCTA decided to file unfair labor practice. I think that there's an ability to, instead of going to a place where the district has to spend tens of thousands of dollars, and the union spends tens of thousands of dollars, I mean, that's money for our students. We're taking it right off the table. It's a big waste. And instead, I would like to ask the leadership at SCTA to work with the leadership of the board. That doesn't happen. And trying to work things out at the staff level when there's a problem, that's not the leadership that our organization needs or your organization needs. So, you know, I think that the advice that maybe you're getting from executive staff, you know, isn't the best advice, that take an opportunity and reach out to the board members and see if we can work on problems together. Sometimes it feels that folks would prefer to witness failure and just use that as a bludgeon, instead of trying to solve a problem beforehand when we can make things better for our students. And that's what we're all here for. I know we have the same goals in mind. So I'd like to just reach out to you, and I know all the teachers that I continue to meet are absolutely committed to doing good things for our district. I welcome all the partnership there. There are so many opportunities to work together, but let's not wait till issues become problems. Reach out to the board members. That doesn't happen. I can't remember the last time I was asked by anybody. It's been over a year. And I don't like to see problems come when they're already irreconcilable. So I think there's a great opportunity to work together. It's a new school year. Let's start off on the right foot. I want to make this district a destination district. I'm committed to that. I've been talking about it for years. And anyone who wants to be a good partner on that, that's how we're going to make this district better for our students, better for our teachers, better for our staff, better for our community, and a real value to, everybody helps pay for that. So let's start off on the right foot. I think we've got a lot of other exciting things in front of us for the school year. I was excited to see what was happening today, the first day of school. Everybody always has a great time when that's happening. Some not all kids, I guess, are super excited about that. But I know a lot of parents were excited today, telling me when they're dropping their students off. So I'm looking forward to a new year, and let's go to it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I almost went to go grab the gavel, I don't know why. Maybe I was looking forward to this meeting. 10.7, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? All right, good. 11.0.
I mean, the Facilities Committee?
Would you like to report on the Facilities Committee?
We only have one committee, yes. I'll just say that we have a meeting scheduled for September 13th, 12:00 PM, at the Maintenance Facilities Office. That'll be the next committee meeting of the Maintenance Facilities Committee.
Great, thank you. 11.0, Board Workshops Strategic Plan and Other Initiative. There's 11.1, Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP Stakeholder. Dr. Al Rogers and Ms. Morrison. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Vice President Hanson, Board Members, Superintendent Banda. I'm Al Rogers, Chief Strategy Officer, and with me I have Kathy Morrison. We are here tonight to talk with you about the LCAP Stakeholder Engagement Plan for During this brief presentation, we will describe staff response to the various recommendations we received from the board, as well as the Parent Advisory Committee members, on the process for the 2015-16 school year. We'll also be reviewing the framework for the board to establish the LCAP Parent Advisory Committees for the 2016-17 school year. And we will seek the board's guidance on the engagement timeline and outreach for this The LCAP for 2016-17 was adopted on June 28th by the board and submitted to the County Office of Education for approval. On August 15th, the county requested the district make some technical revisions to the plan, and those revisions have been made and submitted to SCOE. The new LCAP that will be developed for 2017 to 2020 will include four goals aligning with our new district strategic plan. Those are college, career, and life-ready graduates, safe, emotionally healthy, and engaged students, family and community empowerment, and operational excellence. With an eye toward continuous improvement, we have listened to the feedback received from the board and from our stakeholders, so that we can make improvements on the process wherever possible. We got many rich ideas from the board and community and staff. We held two meetings with the LCAP PAC to hear their pluses and deltas on the committee's work, and to share our thinking for the year ahead. And we have learned the board and community value, things like early communication and transparency, highly. Here are some examples of some of the process improvements we've been able to come up with. First, we'll publish this year's calendar of the LCAP activities in September, so that stakeholders can plan their attendance at meetings and workshops ahead of time. We believe in the value of staggered terms, and have discussed that extensively, so that veterans have a chance and an opportunity to mentor new PAC members. And we understand the value in transparency and budgeting, and will plan, we're hoping to plan an earlier deep dive into the district's budget process. Also, shared decision-making will continue to be integrated with community feedback in the plan. Kathy?
Good evening, Vice President Hanson, Board Members and Superintendent Banda. I am Kathy Morrison, LCAP Coordinator. For the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, staff recommends continuing the appointment process that we have used for the past two years. The committee demographics will represent our district demographics. To achieve fidelity with the intent of the law, we are placing more emphasis on and striving for a strong majority of parents on this committee. Based on feedback from the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, we made some enhancements to the application. We included a more appealing description of the committee's work, why it's important, and why it's fulfilling to serve on this committee. We also will ask applicants to affirm their understanding of the time commitment, the expectations for attendance, outreach, and working in partnership with district staff. After tonight's meeting, the LCAP PAC application will be open until September 30th. On October 20th, at the board meeting, each board member will appoint two members to the committee, and the superintendent will appoint two. Trustees are encouraged to select members from within their trustee area, although that's not required. As before, we will share the application throughout the district, using all available methods of communication, web posting, social media, email, personal invitation. We appreciate assistance from all in spreading the word about this opportunity, which has been described as a front-row seat to district decision-making. As Dr. Rogers stated, we believe the committee will be best served with a mix of new faces and experienced members. We are hoping that members from previous committees will consider applying to serve another year to provide leadership and institutional memory. We also hope that former members who are not able to serve again will help us to recruit new members. We talk about staggered terms, and they are of value for us, but they add complexity. For example, we could say there will be one-year memberships and two-year memberships. After consideration, we believe that with no term limits for committee members, the mix of new and veteran members will work out organically. Some members will want to serve throughout the three-year cycle, and others will be satisfied with just one year. So last year, the English Learner Parent Advisory Committee operated under a parallel structure to the LCAP. The County Office of Education recommends that we continue with this committee as a subcommittee of our District English Learners Advisory Committee, D-LAC, which is the elected body of parents of English learners. Ideally, we would like eight to 16 members on this committee, and a committee that is balanced by language, trustee area, and segment. We work closely with the district's multilingual literacy department, and have a planning meeting scheduled at the end of next week. That will include recruitment strategies for this committee. And we'll continue our efforts to find a dedicated group of parents to serve and be interested in being part of this work. So again, this is our graphic that illustrates our four-pronged engagement strategy, to ensure that we don't overlook any groups in reaching out and consulting on the LCAP. We are planning our engagement for the year, and we are projecting, again, over 100 meetings probably this year, as we continue this work. And as we all know, broad and diverse stakeholder engagement will be especially critical in this next LCAP cycle, as we anticipate the revised LCAP template will be a static three-year So as we know, we have highly involved parents and community members on our LCAP Parent Advisory Committees. However, an area in which we could improve is enhancing broader dialogue with all district stakeholders. We have an opportunity here to be proactive. The state's draft LCAP template includes specific language stating that districts must consult with school site councils and other district advisory groups. So in partnership with our state and federal programs office, we will begin hosting a series of meetings called the School Site Council Learning Collaborative. In this series, we will share information that Title I schools need to know, as well as information on the LCAP as we develop it this year. And it goes without saying that we value partnership, authentic engagement, and two-way dialogue with our stakeholders.
This is the proposed timeline for both LCAP, both LCAP Parent Advisory Committees. We are scheduling an orientation for our parent committees this year to bring everyone up to speed on the basics of the local control funding formula and of the LCAP. We will also review the roles and responsibilities of those committee members. Note that the timeline shows a bit of a lag for the English Learner Parent Advisory Committee. We do not want to finalize the members until after the first D-LAC meeting, which is October 24th. We are anticipating many changes this year with the advent of the LCFF Evaluation Rubrics and a revised LCAP template to be finalized in January 2017. Our team will continue to provide updates to the board throughout the year. Questions?
Do we have a public comment?
We have three public comments on this item, from Liz Guillen, Carl Pinkston, and Jason Weiner.
Good afternoon, good evening. Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. I want to commend the LCAP coordinating team. I think they work really hard. Well, we know that they work really hard. And frankly, it's a lot of work for just the size of their the size of their team. I think it's great that things are starting off earlier, and the plan for developing or composing the committees sounds like a good one. However, I do want to point out that the English Learner Committee is not really a parallel process, and for example, you're not appointing members to that, and it's relying on the already struggling D-LAC, which relies on a really struggling network of ELAC members from school sites. So the membership of that committee could use a real boost, and I recommend that each one of you as a Board Member identify at least one person and ask for their commitment to participate, because I do think that the support of someone else in the district, for example, such as a Board Member, can really contribute to one's interest and motivation. And I think that even though it is a lot of work, once people do it, I think they really come away feeling fulfilled. I want to also highlight the fact that the district statewide, there's a new College and Career Readiness Block Grant that's going out. It'll be $200 million statewide, and it's focusing on unduplicated students, low-income English learner foster youth in grades nine through 12, and it is specifically for activities, services, and actions that allow them to go to college and to graduate. I've handed out this flyer, and I encourage, since it has to be aligned to the LCAP, that's one of the statutory requirements, I encourage the district to consider including it in the LCAP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Pinkston for Black Parallel School Board. Before I speak on the subject, I just wanted to say to Diana Rodriguez, you were baptized with the Black Parallel School Board around the issue of the SRO, so I didn't want you to leave without returning to this issue. Anyway, we support the new, much more aggressive and much more earlier timeline in terms of engaging parents and community in this process, and we're going to be very active in this process, particularly in terms of the community around a couple of issues. One is that we wanted to make sure that some of the concerns that was raised in the last two years not fall off the table and still return as part of integrating into this process. That's one, which, as you well know, has to do Chromebooks and other kinds of things, instructional aids and so forth. Second is that we really do like the concept of staggering, so that with the mix of experience and new people, that's going to be crucial and critical going forward, particularly in terms of the new template that is coming out, the evaluation rubric, and the support and intervention that's going to be taking place. So there's lots going to be happening next year that you're really going to need the support of the community to make this happen. And the third and last piece, and this is a struggle that Al Roger and I have, is that in terms of, is this an advisory or is this really a working group? We may have to figure out a way to make it a happy balance in this group, because many of us who want to be a part of it want to really dig in and really have a rich discussion about what that plan should look like and whether or not it actually become part of the plan. We felt that there was a little bit too much of an influence of staff and not enough of the community in terms of some of the things that we would like to see in the plan. So part of the Board discussion going forth is how much weight and what came out of some of those discussions actually got integrated into the LCAP plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Happy first day of school. My name is Jason Weiner. I'm a district parent. In fact, as of today, I have three children enrolled at Leonardo da Vinci K8, and I've also been a member of the LCAP Parent Advisory Committee for the past two years and was selected as co-facilitator in this current, past year that just ended. I really encourage the Board on this topic to remember that the Parent Advisory Committee and the English Language Parent Advisory Committee are really the only and main formal structures for parents and community to have input, both into the LCAP and really into any district activity. While there are outreach meetings and certainly school board input in many different ways, these are the formal groups that exist beyond the D-LAC and very specific groups, and especially because this is around the students who are most in need and the spending for that. And also remembering that the LCAP and LCFF were designed to have a lot more parent and community input than past processes and structures, and so the more we can do to build that in, the more we are fulfilling the spirit and the letter of that law. I would encourage all of the Board Members here to please think carefully and recruit heavily over the next month to ensure we have a good mix of people on that committee moving forward. I also agree that there is a need for a mixture of experienced and new members, and although the staff recommends no explicit multi-year terms, I would encourage you to, especially when you're recruiting newer folks, to explicitly ask them about multi-year service, because we, as a group, informed the staff and talked among ourselves very specifically that it takes about a year to get to learn even, you know, the minimum that you need to know in order to operate effectively. And lastly, as Liz mentioned, the College Readiness Block Grant, which does serve this exact same population and will be coming to the district as funds to serve that exact population of the LCAP, I would urge the Board to direct the Superintendent Administration to include it in the LCAP and to gain input from the Parent Advisory Committee and the LCAP before the plan comes out of the Cabinet, so that we are using that spending in a way that the community is encouraging, not just reacting to something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Royal?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I just wanted to say a couple of comments. One of them in particular is to say thank you to all the stakeholders that have been involved, not only from the district side, who year after year for the last few years have been taking all the input and, you know, just working very hard to work through this process year by year and improving it. And it was one of my kind of issues to please ask, that I kept on asking to, like, start the process earlier, and I'm not saying that it's just because of my harking on this issue, but I see that it starts earlier, and I think that some of the comments that were mentioned by Mr. Pinkston as far as the true involvement of parents, like, instead of just being just for show really, but actually start delving into the issues, I think that the fact that the process starts earlier in the year, it gives them really the opportunity. I think it's just going to, it's going to follow the form in that as the district works through its budget process, I think it's going to open the space for parents to really ask the questions and get the information and hopefully create the LCAP to a process where it's more than just an advisory, but really starts really pitching in bigger ideas as to how the district needs to move forward. And so I think we're moving in the right direction, and we would not be here had it not been for the tremendous amount of work that is going on from the staff level, but also from the parents and the community folks that are involved year after year, and they really see the value in this system, that it's a governance model that has really no shape, but we're creating as we go, but nonetheless, it's that commitment and engagement and interest to be part of the process that it's creating this space where parents do have a true avenue to really dictate how the district needs to be working and working collaboratively with the Board. So, thank you, and really want to say to people in the community, parents that have been involved, to bear with us, and we look forward to a great year for the LCAP. Thank you.
Vice President Hanson?
Thank you for bringing this to us. I think I definitely agree with some of the comments. I'm very excited that we've got an earlier timeline. I think that's really important for us to be able to get the most value out of this, and I think for the folks who are on the LCAP Advisory Committee to really provide the best value to us as well. A couple recommendations on the application. I don't know, has this application already gone out, be posted, or is this still a draft?
Still draft.
Okay, okay, good. Under the committee demographics, I think it's important that maybe we consider adding a bullet, you consider adding a bullet point there, just you've got parents and then you've got folks who represent students in the LCFF-designated groups. I think it's important to put community members as well. We have to remember that about two-thirds of our residents and taxpayers have no students in the schools, so we are reliant on the great support that we have from our fellow, you know, residents and taxpayers in this district to support our students. Without their support, we're not passing bonds, parcel taxes, or, you know, anything else. So I think it's important that, you know, they should be part of the demographics of this committee as well. They are actually the majority, so their voice is important. I'd also like us to consider, maybe this is something we can just talk about as a Board at whatever the right point is, but maybe we add a Board Member to the LCAP or maybe just a rotating Board Member. One of us attends the nine-plus meetings that are going to be happening. I'm attuned to the comments, Jason, that you made about, and to Carl, that you made about wanting to make sure that the voice is being heard and, you know, the influence of staff and, you know, being advisory, being, you know, in an advisory role. I think if there's a Board Member there, you know, as long as we're not talking as much as we talk up here and are listening, I think that would be very valuable. So, you know, our job wouldn't be to go there and to, you know, be a voice there, but to be a pair of ears actually hearing what's happening, and I think we can bring that back, and I think it'd help the staff, you know, and it just provides some balance. So maybe we consider, and it doesn't have to be the same Board Member every time, because that'd be a lot of extra meetings, but it might be valuable for a rotation of us to volunteer at one particular meeting during the course of these meetings to sit in and listen. I only attended one or two myself, and, you know, I'd certainly be willing to do that again. I think that's, that would be valuable. And then finally, in the application itself, I like the idea that was also mentioned about maybe we put something in there either on the back page where you say, "I agree too," or it could be one of the kind of open-ended questions, but, you know, asking the person if they would consider multi-year, you know, two-plus-year commitment to serve. You know, obviously, they're not committed to doing that, but just asking if they would consider doing that, because I do think that's important. I've had, both of my members have served two years. One, regrettably, has moved, so he's not going to be able to apply, you know, he's not going to apply or doesn't want to serve an additional year. He thinks somebody else should. My other Board Member, I've got to ask and ask if she'd like to continue, because it is important, I think, to have folks who've got that experience on there, and I think if someone's willing to make that kind of a commitment, that that would, might be a deciding factor for me. If I'm choosing between really good candidates and I've got someone who is willing to consider a two-plus-year term, that I'd be more inclined to choose that person as one of my representatives. Thanks.
Thank you.
Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I just wanted to ask if you can help the Board Member out at the conclusion of this item and when you guys get this on the website, can you text us or email us with that link so we can post it on our Facebooks and email it out to our contacts? It would be so much easier than for us to go hunt it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I like Mr. Weiner's comment when he came up and asked, is it Mr. Weiner, or I think it was Mr. Pinkston, about how much weight does the LCAP body have, because a lot of the stuff that they had recommended didn't make it to the LCAP. So I don't know if we want to decide that now, Board, or if we want to bring this item back for discussion, but I'm feeling comfortable enough with saying, you know, whatever that body says, about 70 to 80% of their advice should go into that document. And the reason why I'm saying so high is because we have district staff that are on that committee. We don't need staff. I mean, if this was just you guys developing the LCAP, why do we have an advisory body? So I want to hear from, this is why we go through the process of appointing people. I want to hear from them, you know, otherwise their efforts, you know, go, you know, wasted, and then you hear the frustration from them, "Well, nothing I said got into the document, even though the entire body agreed with it." So, you know, I would feel comfortable making the recommendation of 70, 75, 80, whatever percent of what that body recommends should go into that document. And then that's when you guys can do your staff work of saying, "We recommend this, we don't recommend this, and these are the reasons." Do your analysis and then recommend it to the Board, and let us make the decision.
Thank you.
On slide number nine, other stakeholder groups involved, why are there no Latino groups on there? I mean, we just heard that we had Unite Latinos that came in their meeting with the Superintendent once a month. I mean, there's other Latino groups in this community, and I don't see not one of them on here. Remember what I said at the beginning of this meeting? 38% of the population of Sacramento City Unified School District is Latino. We're not doing a good job. We've got to reach out to the community. That means in a genuine manner in all aspects. I think that's it.
Vice President Ryan?
Thank you. I don't want to belabor too many excellent points that have already been stated by my fellow Board Members. Kathy and Al, I want to thank you for the hard work you've done, but moreover, I want to thank you for taking our feedback and the feedback of the community and running with it. I think I heard from a team member that instead of walking away defeated after your last presentation, you were empowered because we were having a rich conversation about how do we make the process better, more student-centered, more attractive to our parents and families so that they feel inclined to participate moving forward, and I really think you've done that. I know that you submitted a letter to the Board of Education to talk about the rubrics, and I appreciate that. I know that you convened a small group of parents. I know it was difficult to get them together from the Parent Advisory Committee over the summer to talk about the process moving forward. I'm grateful for that. Moving up the timeline, I think, is a huge piece as well. I do really want to underscore the importance of looking at staggered terms and multi-year commitments from our LCAP members. I think it would be a travesty to lose incredible institutional memory like Jason Weiner, who has given so much of his time and effort and gone above and beyond on regular occasion. And thank you to all of the other community members. Liz Guillen, who continues to provide strategic advice to the LCAP PAC. I did want to share just a couple of things. I love Liz's idea of challenging the Board Members to each identify an ELAC, English Language Learner constituent who would be willing to be part of this process. I think an ask from us holds weight, but also I think knowing that we're willing to have conversations with them on a regular basis. I appreciate the fact that I'll reach out to Jason and say, "Should I come to this meeting?" He'll say, "I don't think this is a good use of your time. I'll follow up with you." But just having that regular communication with our LCAP PAC members makes them feel like their involvement is meaningful, like it's actually yielding something at the end of the day. So I love that challenge, and I hope that my fellow Board Members will join me in finding that candidate, or maybe even a few. Beyond that, I wanted to also say, you know, with the College Readiness Block Grant, you were aware that I was part of the Local Control Funding Formula plus coalition that proposed this. So this is an incredible opportunity for us. This is one-time funding allocated over three years, but it is additional dollars towards the types of supports we know help kids into post-secondary education. And so I do want to ensure that we have the space for including this as part of the LCAP process moving forward, and I would even say if there was an opportunity to have a separate meeting of the LCAP PAC to discuss this, I would be happy to be a part of it, particularly in my role at the Campaign for Campaign for College Opportunity, and maybe bring in some of our other key partners who've been drivers of this work.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is an informational item, so. Member Rodriguez?
I was waiting for someone to bring this up, but in the case of a board member being on the LCAP PAC, I want to nominate Member Arroyo. I feel like it's important, we have an outgoing board member to represent. That way, there's no conflict of interest or anything like that. So why don't you consider that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven point two, adopt new board policy number thirty-five fifteen point seventeen, firearms on school grounds. Ms. Nina Delancado and Raul Bazillo.
Good evening, President Pritchett and Superintendent Banda on board. We have a new policy to bring to you tonight for your consideration. Dealing with firearms on school grounds, the Gun Free School Zone Act, as you may be aware, was amended last year to specifically require that an individual who has a concealed weapons permit and would bring that weapon, that firearm, onto school grounds is required to request permission from the superintendent prior to doing so. In view of this public interest and safety issues involved here, there's certainly a need to adopt a policy. The district administration has had discussions internally and has determined that our policy should state that our superintendent will not consider any requests to carry a concealed firearm pursuant to a permit onto school grounds. And that, you know, I should be changing my slide here. A lot of text there. Essentially, the determination comes down to the fact that in our administration's opinion here, after much consideration, the dangers of allowing any individual to bring a concealed weapon onto school grounds would generally outweigh any potential safety benefits that such practice might bring. So our policy that you have before you essentially says that. It just says that the superintendent will not consider any applications by any individual to bring a firearm onto school grounds, even if that individual has a permit. There are exceptions, go back, in case you have any questions, right? The statute really lays out who can bring a firearm onto school grounds, and then that, of course, does apply to law enforcement officers who are active in performing their duties, and also some retired law enforcement officers as well. And there are a couple of other exceptions that are very limited. So those individuals don't have to apply for permission. The folks that would have to apply for permission are all other folks, such as individuals who have a permit to carry concealed firearms and who previous, prior to the change in the law, were allowed to come onto campuses. But since the law was updated and changed, requiring those people to make an application before doing so. Our policy, again, would state that the superintendent would not consider any applications for such. And basically, this is a policy that's consistent with our LCAP goal of encouraging safe, emotionally healthy, and engaged students. Costs are de minimis, other than we would be updating our signage to reflect the current policy at school sites to give people notice. We can go on, and Nina can talk about some of the rationale or some of the reasons behind the policy, if you guys have any questions along those lines. We would welcome those, so.
Do we public comment? All right. Member Ryan, or Vice President Ryan?
Thank you. I want to first thank you both for bringing this board policy before us. Unfortunately, I think this summer was a hotbed of activity and some really unfortunate incidents of violence with our youth. Obviously, those were not on school grounds, but this idea that at a time where we know more conceal and carry weapon permits have been issued in this county than in previous years, exponentially higher numbers, this is of grave concern. Particularly, we also know that there have been some school districts in surrounding areas that have allowed the superintendent the power to determine exemptions for possession of conceal and carry permits on school sites. I think that that's an unfortunate policy to abide by, and I appreciate the level of ambition in this, that we are saying we have zero tolerance outside of law enforcement for the ability to carry firearms. I think that sends a powerful message, and that, in fact, helps us ensure that we have safe schools. So thank you both for your work on this.
Thank you.
Member Wu?
Thank you. I also want to thank you for bringing this to the board, and I think that when we were in committee, we had a pretty robust discussion. And I want to share that with my colleagues, that we, in fact, had a robust discussion. We vetted it, and we think that for the health of our district, the health of our children, rather than creating an opportunity for exemptions, that a complete ban is the safest way to move forward, particularly considering the safety of our children. So when we come to this, I would urge, when it comes back before us, I would urge that your consideration and I vote on this.
Member Cochran?
And I echo my colleague's statements. I just want to thank you very much for making it absolutely crystal clear that we have zero tolerance here and the buck stops with the superintendent. I just need to share something. On the third day of school this year, when I started school, we had an emergency lockdown, and it was not a drill. It was interesting and also somewhat sobering to watch the students as they all completely cooperated, moved to the side of the room, got down, sat still. And these are 14- and 15-year-old kids, and they sat there for an hour, waiting safely until the drill was, not drill, until it was over. It was a problem in the neighborhood. But the real sobering thing about it was how well they did it, how they knew what to do, and how they knew they had to be quiet and what to do to save their lives. And it is just a sickening wake-up call about this country, and your step here, while small, is symbolic, and I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Superintendent?
It's going to sound like a broken record, but I also want to thank you both for the work that you did on this policy. I think it sends a very clear message that firearms will not be tolerated on campus, outside of those used by law enforcement. But I totally agree with the direction that we're going and the consistent and loud message that we're sending. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your work, and we'll see you back. Eleven point three, approve resolution twenty-nine hundred, initial charter petition for Growth Public Schools. Dr. Al Rogers and Jack Kramer and Mr. David Richards.
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Banda. I'm Jack Kramer, and on behalf of the Charter Review Team, I'm pleased to assist and provide findings for the Growth Public Schools Charter Petition. I'd like to introduce a few people tonight. To my left, Dr. Al Rogers. And let's see, I'm at a disadvantage here. We met a few weeks ago.
We're just happy to meet.
Thank you very much, and welcome back. To my right, lead petitioner, Mr. David Richards. And to my far right, Mr. Ed Scolar, outside legal counsel, Lozano Smith. Tonight's presentation will entail an overview of the proposed charter school, our district's charter review team, the driving governance for initial public, initial charter petitions, the criteria to deny an initial charter petition, our staff's findings, and finally, staff's Growth Public Schools petition, it seeks to open in the school year 2017-18 with an opening date of July 1st, 2017. The petitioner seeks an initial enrollment of 112 students, starting as a K-1 school, moving in a slow-growth model to a K-8 school in the school year 2024-2025 with an enrollment cap of 619. They are seeking to locate in the Rosemont portion of the district as an independent charter school. Their initial petition was submitted on May 16th, and tonight, we hold board action. It's been my pleasure to work with 15 of our district's finest, each with their own area of special expertise. I'm very pleased with our team's work and dedication, culminating with tonight's findings and recommendation. The driving governance of charter petitions is the Charter Schools Act of 1992, more specifically, Ed Code 47605, which provides standards and criteria for petition review. In order to deny a petition, the governing board must make written factual findings to support at least one of the six listed criteria. They are, number one, the charter school presents an unsound educational program; two, is demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program; three, does not contain the required signatures; four, does not contain the required affirmations; five, does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of 15 certain elements; and six, does not contain declaration of whether or not the charter school shall be deemed exclusive employer of employees of the charter school. After a significant review of the petition and amendment, and the evaluation of the staff, the staff finds that, number one, the charter school does present a sound educational program, is demonstrably likely to successfully implement the program, does contain the required number of signatures and affirmations, the petition does contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the 15 certain elements, and finally, number six, the petition does contain a declaration of the charter school as the exclusive employer. Given the staff's findings, the Charter Review Team recommends that the board adopt resolution twenty-nine hundred to approve the initial charter petition for Growth Public Schools. Thank you. And now, Mr. David Richards has a re-presentation.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Banda. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is David Richards, and I'm the founding principal and CEO of Growth Public Schools. Thank you to the staff, specifically Mr. Kramer, for his leadership, hard work, and for overseeing a thorough review of the charter petition. And thank you to Dr. Rogers. We look forward to hopefully working together to build a long-term relationship. I'm here tonight with our team, which includes our board of directors, our CFO, our director of operations, legal counsel, and our volunteers. We're all here, available to answer any questions you may have. We didn't bring the parents out tonight. Given the time of the agenda item and the fact that many of them have small children and the strong showing two weeks ago, we asked them to sign their name to the petition that you have now to represent themselves that way. We have 136 signatures of parents and community members that are here virtually. As we said from the beginning, and our actions have supported, we're here to work together for our kids. That's why we agreed to a 48-day extension, to ensure that we get to know each other, that we understand each other, and that we build a solid foundation for a long-term partnership. As such, we were eager to discuss the misunderstandings and small concerns with the staff based on their initial review of the charter petition. Since we did submit a thoroughly comprehensive and legally compliant charter petition with over 1,000 pages of documentation, we were happy to have a dialogue and conversation. Through a few short conversations, we were able to clarify concerns, and as you saw from Mr. Kramer's presentation, eliminate every single concern. The staff report you have today is a result of these conversations and a commitment from both parties to dialogue. Our goal has always been to complement the impressive and innovative school portfolio of the Sacramento City Unified School District. We believe that as a small, innovative school, our charter petition represents the intent of the charter law, and hopefully, we will be an incubator for innovation as the law intended. We will be small, but mighty, and intend to grow slowly to provide the best education for our students. We've been planning the school for a few years and have spent the last two years on the ground, listening to parents, kids, and community members here in Sacramento. My family's here, which means I had long-term relationships to build upon, and we're excited about bringing a new and different, yet proven, model to the Rosemont community and the surrounding area. We know that it's hard work to open a school, but we are ready, and we believe we have the capacity to be successful. We have a founding team with 100-plus years of combined experience, running some of the best schools in the state. I alone have been involved with opening eight new schools in the last decade. To illustrate our founding team's experience, I wanted to highlight Frances Tesso, whom we met at the last meeting. She's the founder of Voices Language Academies, which was recently voted the Charter School of the Year. Frances has dedicated her life to providing high-quality schools to English learners, such as herself, and as a founding team member, she's committed to ensuring we do the same. I'm also the board president for Voices, and so I deeply understand the complex work of providing oversight to schools and the critical importance of a strong board and a strong team. We have a high-capacity local board of directors who have a wide array of experience, provide the necessary and critical oversight. The charter petition we submitted goes above and beyond meeting all of the legal requirements, and there are no legal findings to deny the petition. Given the high-quality and legally compliant charter petition, the strong capacity of our team, and most importantly, the excitement in the community from the families, we hope you'll take the staff's recommendation to approve the charter petition for Growth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a public comment?
We have one comment on this item from Grace Trujillo.
Good evening, members of the board, and John Banda. As I mentioned earlier today, I spent most of my day at Washington Harbor for my son. Please give schools the opportunity to choose, because it's not for all the children. I know for Andrew, my son, has been going to so many schools. Let me tell you, it was the first time I actually saw him smiling, the teachers embracing him. And for him to have that choice, the kids were crying, grating. I try not to cry, because I'm an advocate. I wouldn't be up here. Like I said, things happen for a reason. I've been in all kinds of schools. I've advocated and been with Andrew, seen the pros and cons of each one. And I think people should have the right to go to the school they choose, and for the choose for the kids. I wasn't planning to come here and talk about charter schools. I was planning to come here for my other doc friend that wanted to have a strong still. But I think, like I mentioned before, it costs $6,500 to go to St. Mary's, $8,000 to go to Mary Hill. Cost, the state gives public schools $10,000 for my son Matthew, for a child who's English-speaking, $13,000. And right now, we don't have enough money to educate our kids so they can meet guidelines. Go to Our Lady of Guadalupe. All those kids are non-English speakers, and they don't pay a single dime, and they get educated, and they're reading. What's going on with our system? So I asked the board today to please... So I ask the board today, to please, give charters or anybody an opportunity, because that's the key thing. How are we gonna get our children educated for the future? And when the state has no money, how are we gonna get there? Thank you.
Thank you. Any board comment? Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I don't want to delay this meeting any more than what we already are. I just want to thank Mr. Richards for reaching out to me, and wanting to have some dialogue. And I think the timing was perfect, because initially, when you reached out to me, we had a different board report before us, and then when we finally talked, we had a different perspective on that. And I had asked you some questions over the phone, and one of these questions was, did anything get changed in your petition during the conversation with staff? And so, in full transparency of our conversation, I'd like to ask Mr. Kramer to come forward and answer that question for me, for the board.
Okay, if you could, I'm sorry, ask the question and clarify.
Yeah, so, did anything in the petition that was submitted to you, since the last board meeting to this time, did anything get changed in that petition, physically?
Would you be speaking specifically about amendment one, to the petition?
I don't know what amendment. Was there an amendment submitted after the board meeting? There was.
Yeah, so, with the board directive of, the extension of the board meeting from the last two, tonight, there was, the directive to take additional information, and the mechanism to do so was an amendment one submission by Growth Public Schools. I believe it was the day after the board meeting, so that would make it the 19th. And in that amendment one submission, there was considerable information that we used in the final findings, and that resolved numerous, numerous issues.
Did this change the content of the initial application, or was this simply a clarification of the items?
Twofold, I would say. It did change the content of the petition, in that whatever was in the amendment one, it superseded the petition, and then it also did have clarification in there as well.
Full disclosure again of our conversation, Mr. Richards, this board in the past, and I'm not sure how many of our board members were here when this was discussed, and I know that you're fairly new to us, but we do not want our process to act in any way as a means for petitioners to come back, after the board has reviewed, to come back and modify the application. Because if we do for one, we do for all. And so, you know, I, I did, I was not aware, I was not here at the last board meeting, so I was not aware that there was an amendment that was put forth, and that it changed content, from the initial petition that you had before you. He just said that it changed the content. Is there a discrepancy that we have here? Yes.
Just to clarify, I would say 99% of it was the same content, just rewritten, like literally re-explained in a document. 1% was like, I think we included professional development calendar, and maybe like, a couple other items, but 99% of it was taking the stuff that was in the petition and trying to write it in a way that we could have a dialogue about, so it was not new information.
I need some agreement from staff, maybe our attorney. Did that change any of the petition, the original petition?
Well, most was clarification, but an example of something that would change from the petition would be, there was a comment in the initial findings regarding the TK program, and in amendment one, the petitioner stated that they will not be entertaining a TK1 program in the initial years, so in essence, that did have a bearing on, on the original petition.
Mr. Scolar, can you opine on that for me, please?
Sure. I would, I would say that the, the major concern in the prior petition review, on the initial petition that was submitted, where there were some vagaries, and I think those vagaries were filled in and clarified, with the submission of this amended petition.
And in the past, we've had petitions submitted that had these similar types of vague language, and we, this board has denied it because of that. So, do you think that this was equivalent to that type of vague language, or would you say, as Mr. Richards says, it was more of a clarification? The same thing, but kind of rewritten?
Sure, and I, I don't have, I don't recall specifics in the past, but let me give you, for instance, in, in the prior, I know that in prior petition reviews that we've done, we've had certain findings that were made, where there was a lack of a comprehensive description of the educational program. Along with that, there was a finding that the educational program is unsound. In the, in the review that was done of the initial petition that was submitted by these petitioners, there was no proposed finding that they had an unsound educational program. It was that there was a lack of, it was strictly that there was a lack of a comprehensive educational, or a lack of a comprehensive description. And so, there, I think you can make a distinction, that there was no finding prior to say that the educational program was unsound. And so, like I said, it was filling in the vagaries.
Okay.
And I, can I speak to, you know, the entirety of the, the substance wasn't the same?
Yes.
You know, I, I can't say whether it was added or not. I would say that the goal was to fill in the vagaries and clarify.
All right. I'm interested in hearing what other board members have to say about this. Thank you.
Member Wu?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I'm satisfied with the committee's recommendation to, to us regarding Growth Public Schools. I'll refer to it as GPS, because it's easier to say. But, and, and that it has met the criteria, and that none of the criteria for which we can deny the petition exist. But I want to share some thoughts with my colleagues, and, and that is a concern that I have, which cannot be addressed here, but I want to put it out on the record anyway. And that is that 47600 of the ed code is, ed sec is entitled the Charter Schools Act of 1992. And the following section, 47601, articulates seven goals or intent that the, the Charter Schools Act is intended to meet. They want the charter schools to accomplish all of the following, and I won't read it to you, it's A through G. Not like our graduation requirements, different A through G. But I've been always thinking about charters as incubators of innovation for our academically low-achieving. And subsection B, 47601 subsection B, seeks as a goal to increase learning opportunities for all pupils, with special emphasis on expanded learning experiences for pupils who are identified as academic low-achieving. And so, in working with our independent and dependent charters, we, particularly in our independent charters here at Sac City, we have approved charter petitions, which really emphasize education for low-achieving, academically low-achieving students. And I was looking for that in this application. This application targets as a students, all students in our district, and in there, you'll, we will be able to seek low-achieving students, as well as higher-performing students. But I'm concerned, in the future, not with this application, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to adopt staff's recommendation, but I'm concerned that if we don't focus more on criteria of seeking the goal of helping our academic low-achieving students, that we may create a precedence, where charters come in and just say, well, we're gonna help all the students in the district. And so, swept up in that will be some low-achieving students. I want us to focus on, we are a public school district, and we help all the students, but we have sometimes stumbled, and charter schools have really stepped up to help fill that niche where we haven't, we, the district, have not done the best job. And I want to encourage charters to continue to do that. And so, for future charters, I will be looking more particularly, or closer, at how the charter might be helping low, academically low-achieving students. And thank you for the opportunity to make this statement. But with that said, because of these, the absence of discussion on that is not a reason for denying the petition, I'll move forward with a motion to adopt staff's recommendation, resolution number 2900, to approve the initial charter petition for Growth Public Schools.
Thank you, Member Wu. All right. Member Rodriguez?
Thank you, Member Wu, for that enlightenment on the ed code, with respect to charters. I do want to circle back, you know, I, I know that I made a commitment as a board member, to not allow this process for corrective measures. You know, you don't get three bites at the apple here. You have a first reading, you have a thorough discussion, you have a second time it comes forward, and we purposefully and intentionally cut the process down to two steps instead of three, because we found that too many petitioners were doing exactly this, what we just, what is occurring here. So I'm afraid I'm gonna have to stand by my commitment, because I am a person of my word. If things had changed from the last board meeting to today, as a result of feedback from staff and the hard work that they put into this, this is a big committee, as you can see, it's a long review process, and what their word is, is what their word is. And something changed from their word to this time. And so, I'm gonna have to stand by that, stand by staff, stand by what they did the first time around, and being consistent. Okay, so I'm afraid I can't support this one this time. However, I do want to say that I have been a supporter of, of schools of innovation. I will support your school. I know that this is gonna get passed here today. I think it'll get passed here today, because board-staff recommendation means a lot to the board. I do, I am a private school parent. I do believe in options. I do understand what Ms. Trujillo was talking about, however, I think it's a little misled, because in essence, us people who put our children into private school are paying twice. And I think that needs to be noted, that we pay property taxes, those property taxes get distributed out to the school system, to the public school system, and it supports the public school system. We make choices as parents, whether we want to take our children to private schools or to charter schools, we make those choices. And I do believe that charter schools are innovation, are incubators of innovation. I have seen it myself. But I also believe that not all charter schools are created equal. Not every charter school is a good charter school. So I wanted to make sure that that's on the record as well. Again, good luck, GPS, and you do have my support on a go-forward, I just can't put my word elsewhere where I had already made a commitment. Thank you.
Member Cochran?
I'm not sure. Like that, you said?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I do support the staff of the district, Sacramento City Unified School District. I've seen staff bring up staffing here in a very difficult time. I have witnessed staff protect our students, bring forward all sorts of proposals for board policy, that are, will do nothing but positive things for our students. And I trusted staff the first time you came back with this report, and found it very curious that suddenly, it had to be a do-over. And I don't know exactly what went on there, I don't, not gonna belabor the point, but obviously, a voice was injected into the process that made you think that you, what the job you had done was not adequate or not good. It's no secret here that I'm not a fan of charter schools, and I'll vote no. I had a very pleasant conversation with the petitioner, and I know that he is a man of education and wanting to help children, but I believe in public education. And for those who are curious about the price differences, about where you send your children, and why it costs so much for public education, it is our duty and responsibility to educate every single child that comes through the door, no matter what the price tag of that education is, and it drives up the cost of what we have to pay as taxpayers to educate a child. So, thank you for the petition. It's a curious thing here, why it has to be a do-over, and perhaps that requires further scrutiny and investigation, but you will get a no vote, unfortunately, from me.
Great. All right. So, first off, I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Kramer for your work on this, and I, as a parent, I do believe in choice as well, as many of my colleagues up here do. I have a charter in my area, George Washington Carver, which Mr. Heo had spoke of, which is a fabulous school, and is doing great things for the children in my area. I can, not that I'm trying to change your mind, which I probably won't anyway, but I can tell you that, you know, if you go back and you read the original petition versus what the staff recommendation, and no offense to staff, because I think that you were doing your due diligence, there were many aspects of the petition versus what the recommendation were, that really didn't blend for me. Like, it was, I, if I can give you one example, like, I think it was, let me think, I think it was something about signature, or phone numbers, or something. And though they had met the requirement, it was not put in the recommendation that they put, that they met the requirement. There were several aspects in that recommendation of where they met the rec, where they met the requirement, but it wasn't stated that they met that requirement, so. So I'm gonna call this to order, and I think we already had a, a motion from Member Wu, and with second, we're gonna go with a roll call vote.
I didn't hear a second.
No, I second, I second.
All right.
Yeah. Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Roll call. Member Arroyo. Member Cochran. Vice President Hanson. President Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rodriguez. Second Vice President Ryan.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Madam President, the action, or the item passes by a vote of five to two.
Great. Thank you for your time tonight. Item 12.0, future board meetings, dates and locations, September 15th, 2016, 4:30 here for closed session, and 6:30 open session, October 6th, 4:30 and 6:30. We are adjourned.
Yeah.
Oh, I should have left, though.
You didn't, you didn't get the motion?
Oh, can I, can I get a motion to adjourn? I'm trying to keep you out of your path.
I moved to adjourn.
Here we go.
I'll give that a second. We're adjourned.